Good evening and welcome to the March 13th Special Topics Section of the Meeting of Common Counsel. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. All of counsel is present with the exception of Alder Person Letterman, who is excused due to illness. Begin with just reading the emergency evacuation notice, since we do have folks in the audience. Pardon me. In case of an emergency evacuation, we are to take one of two exits, the one that most of you all came in through. There's another emergency exit door over here, and then wait at the trees on the same side of the street on South Kyuga and Green. We do not cross Green unless it is absolutely necessary. Those with restricted mobility, in the event of emergencies, it is best to move to one of the stairwells, and first responders will arrive to aid you. In the event of other emergencies, you will be notified at that time. We want everyone to be aware of their surroundings and offer help when it is not to your own detriment, as you are your own best advocate. With that being said, first quick item, just review of the previous Special Topics meeting. We received those excellent briefings. Can I have someone please move the minutes? Moved by Alder Person Kumar, seconded by Alder Person Paprizio. Any questions or comments or revisions on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as written? And that carries 10-0. Thank you, colleagues. Alright, at this time, I'd like to invite up our guests, who will be providing a update on... That's quite alright. Yeah, so I'd like to invite up our guests. We're gonna have a presentation on the update for the reimagining public safety efforts. I understand that one of our guests this evening is running a little bit late, so they will be joining us as we are in progress, but I'm not sure who's gonna start. Alright, turn to the city manager. Thank you.
So I, one of the things that you should know, this is, we're excited. This is our first, like, full iteration of the new cadence of all of your meetings, so we've been excited to see that happen. So what you'll see coming forward for these meetings is we've put a template together. So you saw the one that I sent out on Monday for this topic, and then there was the one that wasn't included in the agenda from planning on short-term rentals. So we want you to know that, you know, we're all, we're all kinda working with this new system. So if there is information, or a different format, or other questions, or other things that you need from staff as you're reading through the memos, just please feel free to let me know. We thought, we're trying to keep them to two pages or under, and we're also trying to encourage staff writing the memos to embed links in them whenever possible, so that way we're not, you know, attaching multiple documents. So please let us know if the links aren't working when we send things to you. So for tonight, the first one that we're working on, what you'll see, what I wanted to kind of walk through on the memo and sort of the thought process, we are going to try to always include a section in the memo that says "questions for counsel," so that you all have a good understanding of what we're putting in front of you, and what it is that we want the crux of our discussion to be. So you'll see, when we kind of get through the presentations, then we'll kind of certainly allow you to ask for whatever information that you need, based on whoever's presenting, and then we'd like to focus the discussion in that "questions for counsel" section. So that's just kind of generically how we intend for this work session meeting to go. Does anyone have any questions sort of about that process?
Alder Person Shapiro.
I have a different question, I'm sorry for... Can someone explain to me what the rules are regarding behavior of the public when they're coming to our meetings?
I'll address this question Alder Person, because it's a point of information. I'll note that this is a public forum, and all forms of speech are permitted, if a type of speech is permitted. So First Amendment, we have to permit any speech. I'm certain the attorney can better articulate that, but this is what I've got.
I'm happy to jump in here. So the Common Counsel rules of procedure have order and decorum rules that sort of govern these meetings regarding what the mayor was starting to say. If we are allowing speech of one sort, we cannot discriminate based on viewpoint. So if you're gonna allow public comment on a topic, you have to accept all viewpoints on that topic. If you're gonna allow a sign in the audience, for example, you have to allow all signs in the audience, and that's kind of the general guideline. Obviously, things get complicated once you get into specific examples, but I think that's the view from 10,000 feet.
Questions for the city manager on what they had shared.
And I understand Kathy just parked, so...
Alright.
She would like to do a little dance, something.
Terrible dancer.
Maybe we could do introductions, that might be good. I don't know if anyone knows, everyone from Tompkins Whole Health, and we could stall with some introductions. Megan?
I have to push buttons. Sorry about that. I'm Harmony Ayers Friedlander. I'm the Deputy Commissioner of Mental Health Services, and also the Director of Community Services. In the role as Director of Community Services, my job is to help identify, along with our Community Services Board, gaps in services for substance use, mental health, and developmental disabilities in the county, and of course, in the city of Ithaca. So behind me is Ross Milne. He is a public health postgraduate fellow, fellow, who has been working tirelessly on a number of projects that he will discuss around some RFPs, some requests for proposals that have been released to start new programs, that I think will be a great addition to the resources that we have available in our community and help meet some of those gaps and services. So he'll talk a bit about that. We're really lucky to have someone who can dedicate that kind of time and talent to this work, and we would not have been able to do so without the merger with the Public Health Department. So Mental Health and Public Health merged together to become Tompkins County Whole Health. So that's why we're able to have a whole Public Health Fellow working on mental health needs in our community. And I'm here to talk about the care team. If you're, if you're ready?
I think Kathy is here.
Oh, okay. Is Kathy? I'm sorry, Kathy. I knew you were there. I didn't...
We were just doing introductions to stall for time, so if you'd like to share.
Thanks, I appreciate that. You know, parking in the city, you have to get what you're talking about. It's all, it was very easy and very convenient, but I had to wait for the light, so...
Thank you for waiting for the light.
So Kathy Zoner, I have an intro in my slide set. Many of you already know me from my work at Cornell University Police. I was there for 27 years, the last 10 years as chief, and have been working since September with the city of Ithaca in a consulting means to try to move along the idea of unarmed response team for, in partnership with the reimagining public safety directive.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Thank you both for being here. And I'll perhaps stall for time a little further, because it looks like maybe we're having a tech issue.
No, I think they're alright. They're just getting the slideshow up.
Okay.
Sorry, you can stay there. Or do I have to act as... Do I have the, do I have the con? I just give you the high sign, you know?
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Alright, thanks, everybody. So as you can see, all three names, actually, this is almost the updated one. There's one that was newer than this, but your name was on there too, Harmony. So the thing I wanna impress mostly is, is that the reimagining public safety involves a conglomeration and a coordination of a lot of different factions, and I'm sure you guys all know that. So this presentation is intended to catch you up on where we are at the moment. I've already messed up which button I'm supposed to press. Which one? It's still, it's this one? Oh, thank you. All those assistants. So this one. Alright, we'll go back then. So basically, we did the basic introduction. A lot of you know that I went to the FBI National Academy, FBI National Academy, its leadership program, and I focused in graduate-level studies there, and picked up a bunch of graduate-level credits in leadership at University of Virginia, which is a co-sponsor of the program. I am a full-time public safety consultant, and, or have been since, from 2019 to about 2021 for Healy Plus is now what it's called, which is a public safety consulting firm that focuses in higher education. And then I have various certifications through, probably the one most relevant to this is in crime prevention through environmental design. So that's some basic background for me. I'm already, why can't I just press a button and have it go? Your magic. And we'll skip this slide, because Tom's gonna tell you about himself. Thanks. I'm gonna try to do this. Here we go. So the basic tenants are, you know, to move forward, we gotta know where we came from. And I think that's a lot, very part and parcel with this particular meeting, in that you're largely new governance, new, lots of new stuff, but we don't wanna forget where this ask originated from. In reimagining public safety, we want to respect and treat every human being with compassion and respect, in order to move forward in an efficient and supportive way. Then we also need to acknowledge and correct mistakes along the way, because we are going to make them, but we also can't forget to celebrate our successes. We wanna hold ourselves and everyone else accountable, be prepared to critically assess and reimagine how we can provide those safety services, being equitable, just, fair, as much as we possibly can. And the basic foundation is to build trust, and act with integrity, and act with compassion. And sometimes I know it's tough to manage all of those things, but I just wanted to put the reminder in here. So by way of refresher, here's a basic timeline. Again, I don't intend to read every slide. None of these things on here should be a surprise to any of you. Executive Order, and then the city's own RPS resolution, getting in the CJ, Community Justice Center's Director in place, the special committee is established, and then I started in consulting, and then Tom joined the Ithaca Police Department, and, and of course, you guys are now in the newly restructured Ithaca City Governance. So that's our condensed timeline, lots of effort, up to that, after that, during that, all those things. But those are the high points. So what have I been doing? Big question. So what I've been doing is, I've been trying to meet with law enforcement leadership, district attorney included. We're working on, you know, if we are to stand up this unit, what would a training look like? Because you don't wanna just put out a job description and hope everybody's gonna quote "get it," unquote. We wanna make sure that the Department of Emergency Response is engaged with this, and they are a very critical partner, because the reality is, is most of the calls are coming through there. So they would need to be able to appropriately triage, get them to the right resources, and help determine what type of resource should be sent out. And that goes for things that Tompkins County Whole Health is doing as well. Community Justice Center, met with them, meeting with them ongoing. We're talking about culturally responsive training, we're looking at committees on engagement, trying to get community engagement, and continue on where I think there's been some difficulties in keeping momentum. Tompkins County Whole Health, being collaborative with their care and CRT teams, and Ross's new program that he's working on. I've worked with an AMI Program Manager, who's also doing developmental training and making sure we're coordinating. The last thing you wanna do is have training being taught one way by one unit, something different by another unit. So we're considering establishing a micro credential, credentialing, or sort of a customized training that could be standardized, which would allow this, this unit, however it forms, to be consistently trained, and with some oversight and formality, so that there would be consistency in the programs going out forward. And then, of course, community networking. They've done a lot on their own. A lot of independent groups have been already doing some of this community engagement, trying to get ahead of problems before they rise up and become a police problem, or a mental health problem. And we wanna continue to keep that engagement, but now start to build those together with the remaining leg of this reimagining public safety. So my job has been to run around and try to herd the cats, if you will, get everyone's voices continue to be heard, be a point of contact for those that feel happy about progress, and those that feel unhappy about progress, and talk about what we can do to keep moving things forward. Currently, we're focusing the efforts on that partnership development, and you'll hear from my partners here at the Ithaca Police Department, as well as Tompkins County Whole Health. And I'm also working very closely with Mike Stitley up at the 911 Center. We talk about, okay, what would, what would a job look like? What are some key components that we're looking for? Skills, knowledge, capabilities, if we're going to bring something forward. And then, of course, we wanted to map and define our city and county resources and responsibilities, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in this next slide. So I did a lot of mapping, I did a lot of resource. There are a ton, a plethora of resources in the city of Ithaca. The vast majority of them are either Monday through Friday, nine-to-five kind of thing, or there are very specific criteria that must be met in order to be in a program, or there are drop-ins and things of that nature, but a person has to be already willing to go through those processes, or connected to those processes. I think a lot of our community members that know of those resources have been excellent at directing people to those resources that are available to them through the normal business hours. So what I tried to do is capture in this slide is, who is actually a crisis responder? What is a crisis responder resource? In other words, what's operating 24/7? What gives you a person in response? And then I also identified, there's a couple places where there are, you could call it an unarmed response going on in the Tompkins County Sheriff's Office, but that person isn't actually responding in person. They're taking phone calls, doing phone reports, those types of things. So you're not, and they are, I think they're calling it a sheriff's clerk, at this point. So there are some, lots of definitely models out there that are doing independent armed response, but there are plenty of places that are just trying to coordinate that with existing resources, and seeing if they can't build out teams that are working towards a common goal. The IPD Care Team is a great, and the Tompkins County Sheriff's Care Team are great examples of that, where there is a separation of the unarmed service that's being provided there, but there's a co-response that goes out to incidents, but that person, the, the care portion can also talk to the person through follow-up and do case management. And I know that Melody and Ross will be talking more about that, so I don't wanna focus too much time there. Cornell has their own community response team that they started, I think they told me they, they launched it in September, and it's been through fits and starts already, so we all know that these things take time, but they have moved forward, and taken those steps, and taken the hits, and they are learning. I'll be meeting with them at the end of the month to, they're trying to map out some of the training things too. And again, we would love to have as much as possible consistency across any services that are provided, whether they're through Cornell, or through Tompkins County Whole Health, or Family and Children's Center, or whatever. We would love to have some coordination of those services. So again, you're not trying to, you're not competing against one another, you're really working as a team to do this. The Tompkins County Care Individual has been up a bit longer, and they're doing some response. I know that there's some stuff on the dashboard there that tells you what is going on. I listed number one is the Crisis Negotiation Team, which cannot be forgotten. It is all law enforcement, I believe, at this point, on the negotiator's team. And I don't know if they've opened that up to anybody outside of that, but that is the truly critical, urgent, imminent, risk-to-life response team, and that only gets activated through 911, and they are there to try to de-escalate the situation. I don't wanna forget them as a resource. The next slide are some of the current efforts that are on hold and in development, and these are some of the things that I know Melody and Ross will be talking to. The Family and Children's Center used to run sort of a 24-hour hotline. Again, not an in-person response, but they would take phone calls around mental health issues, and you could defer them pretty much 24/7. And they would, you know, they got a couple hours where they weren't open, but they were, they were by and large available. And that is something that I know Melody's group is working on, trying to come up with a reasonable alternative for that. Mobile Support Services, I know that's gonna be spoken about later, and the Mobile Crisis Team is really, if I'm not mistaken, that's the care team at this point. We've, you've sort of morphed that over, and then split some outreach off into a different area. So again... Right, right. So that's, this is, a lot of things are in development. I wanna make sure that we know to name these things as resources that either were or are kind of being reevaluated and redistributed to balance some of these efforts out. I do know that in the Mobile Support Services Unit, that they are looking at moving it outside of that Monday-through-Friday framework, to really give some more evening and late-night activities, or outreach availability for, for that. So the things that are immediately forward for us are to create, a lot of, a lot of the issues, I think, are coming up around communications and sharing of information transparency, right? It's always transparency. We, we know a lot of things are happening, those of us who are in the middle of it, but if you're not in the middle of it, where can you go to find out? There was an RPS website. It's kind of on hold right now. They haven't had somebody to manage and maintain it, so we'd like to see that potentially be revived and maintained as a centralized resource that would try to minimize the amount of maintenance that has to happen, but also be able to share data much like the sheriff's offices sharing their care data. There would be an opportunity to provide critical information to the community, and be a one-stop shopping for someone, say, "what's going on with this thing?" We know that we can get them there. Once we establish the direction we wanna go, we wanna initiate, we need to be able to initiate a hiring process, what's that gonna look like? That's gonna be tag teamed with what is the training of the individuals going to look like? And then, of course, all along that, we wanna talk about how we're gonna market and recruit this. We're gonna recruit for the positions. We'd love to have community members be some of these folks, because we believe that there's some people out there already doing the work. So if they're already doing the work, how can we quickly transition into potentially building a team of individuals, even if they're not a first responder? If they are, the model that I think is closest to it is the crisis managers up at Cornell. The public safety responds up there, police respond up there, but if it is clearly not a case that should be in police hands or management, then it goes to this crisis team, who are known commodities. They're mostly Dean of Students people, they're, they're trained and known to the students as a resource. Similarly, there could be communities, members that would be wanting to do this type of thing as well. And again, that's more of a, how can I support, how can I direct you to existing services? Not trying to be the counselor, not trying to be the caseworker, but also trying to provide direction to resource, give the time that's often needed in cases where things are entangled, and really, don't, aren't really a law enforcement thing. Some of the past and current challenges, we're keeping in mind as we move forward in this. In the past, we know that there's, we acknowledge and move past any opposition by the PBA. I think we're through that. We all know that the ethics review was an issue, and as any, you see it in both past and current, that analysis paralysis. We're, what I'm finding in my interview process, in my information gathering process, is everyone's willing to go forward, but we're not really sure what going forward means yet. And there's a, it's a fear-based, if we don't do it exactly right going out the gate, then it's a failure. And I'm gonna try to encourage us to go ahead and just take that leap, get it to a, at least a minimal set of standards, and see what we can do to move forward, to see what we really need. And again, the current challenge about the interactive website, where you can get information, resource directly, and get a good explanation of what's going on in all of the reimagining public safety efforts, including the CJC efforts, including all of those types of things, so it, information doesn't stay isolated, or you only know if you know somebody, the, those types of things. And I'm sure the question's coming, coming through your brains, you know, so, so what? So what can we do? Keep current. My phone number will be at the end of this slide here. Ask questions of your constituents, ask questions of each other, ask questions of law enforcement, you know, just ask questions. You can prioritize a reimagining public safety funding that is well thought out, presented, and seems to be fitting the bill. You can solicit and share feedback, again, from your constituents. Again, funnel it back through me. You can funnel things that are mental health-related, also through Melody, law enforcement-related. I know Tom's very receptive. And again, identify any opportunities you have for any programming or education to the, to your public, to your constituents, and to yourselves. We can run small group info sessions, we can run large group info sessions, and the last thing we wanna do is really sort of start everything over, because I think you have a good foundation. Now it's, now we need to decide what's the next steps. So my personal number's there, 607-277-2423. It's the first time you're ever calling me. I probably won't know who you are. Please leave me a message. I will call you back. And you can reach me also at that email, kazoner@cityithaca.org.
Thanks, Kathy.
And I know there might be questions. I think there was an ask to probably hold questions till later, but if somebody's just can't move on, we'll have, you know, a minute, but...
I appreciate that, but I'm actually gonna, I'm actually gonna say...
You're gonna say no.
Hold the questions, so, thank you.
Back to Melody. You wanna go, or Tom?
You're very good at this. I'm so glad you're here. I've got my sweaty... Which one do I want?
Right here, the square, the keypad.
Oh, okay. So my name is Harmony, but Kathy must know my sister, because her name is Melody. So you did call me Melody the entire time, and I thought it was really funny, because I am so used to being called Melody all of the time. Is that totally fine? Yeah, yeah. So you're musical, that's what that means. So, yeah. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the Crisis Alternative Response and Engagement Team, which is a really big mouthful. I did not come up with it. That is Jennifer Olin, who is the deputy sheriff, or undersheriff. She's the undersheriff for the county. So she's very good at coming up with these wonderful names. So that's where that came from. And she had a very strong desire to create a program like this. So we worked very closely with the Sheriff's Office, and with Deanna Carruthers, who used to be the DEIB Officer for Tompkins County, and the design of this model. It's a piloted model. The county is paying for the clinical position. So what we had before was, we would have people who are also seeing clients, and who would also respond to crisis in between seeing clients in their regular workday. Not the best model, right? And then we would have a clinician go out and follow, follow law enforcement out to a scene, and then try and gather information and have a good... and then try and gather information and have a good response. What we've discovered is having people ride together and respond together makes for a much, much stronger response. You're communicating, you're figuring out how, what kind of information you need to know, what's the best way to respond, become a team. And what's interesting about the situation is that the, the care team started in the county a while back, and there is a lot of information on the sheriff's website that you can look on that team. But we just started here, so I'm glad we're talking about it now because we have actually started in February. So you do have a care team here. It is a Monday through Friday daytime team. We're hoping that at some point we can see growth and expansion of that team if that's what's required. But why we developed the care team in the first place is because we have a problem. And this slide really outlines what that is. Between 5% and 15% of all calls to 911 nationally are for behavioral health emergencies and often result in a law enforcement response alone. A quarter of police-involved shootings, so about 25%, are linked to mental illness, half of which occur in a person's own home. More than 2 million people with serious mental illness are booked into jail each year, and we have a problem in our county around people with mental illness in jail. And the prevalence of behavioral health conditions in jails and prisons is three to four times that of the general population. Once in jail, people with mental illness are incarcerated twice as long as people without mental illness, and few receive treatment. Upon release, I don't know. I can't see the rest of my slide. Oh, and it just moved. I hit something. Well, upon release, what the rest of that slide says is because people lose their health insurance, because now they have a criminal record, getting employment is harder. So people often end up being homeless and having even more stressors in their life. That's the problem. And you'll see there's little numbers on that slide. I think you'll get this slide. And at the end of this packet, you'll see all the resources you could review for that. This model, co-response teams, has been used internationally, a lot of in Australia and England, were some of the first places to really use the model. And so there's a lot of good research already, and a lot of places in the United States have started to use that, this kind of a model and are developing more research and what works and what doesn't. So this slide really just points out that we have different levels of, a continuum of crisis services in our county already. And this program is really at that top. It's the urgent response at the top of the slide. This is for situations where someone's calling 911 because they think they have a serious crisis. And maybe they don't know all the details of it. Maybe they're just hearing a situation, but they really feel that this is something that requires a law enforcement response. And law enforcement is able through dispatch to gather more information, to gather information. Maybe they know something about this subject, and they know that this is a really good opportunity for the care team to respond. The care team for the county has responded with other law enforcement departments. And then sometimes they're calling off other responders. And we're gathering all of that information to show, like, the state police didn't need to come. An ambulance didn't need to come. We're bringing the right level of support to the situation that's required. So we don't have the trauma of someone going to a hospital if they don't need to go to a hospital. We're not having the trauma of having multiple teams there if you don't need multiple teams there. There have been situations where a number of people have responded because somebody might have really required that. And we've gotten, I received a letter from a, a family member that brought tears to my eyes because they said, "Your team saved my son's life." So it may have required a pretty intensive response, but it was a well-coordinated response that had a very strong mental health component in it that made all the difference for how, how the services were provided if a person needs a high level of support. They need to go to a hospital. They need to go to the emergency department. How all of that information is communicated and what that feels like for that person is really, really important. And so that's where this team sort of rests. Some of the other teams you're talking about and hearing about are those subacute kinds of crisis situations. They aren't, they don't really require a law enforcement response, so we need those too. But when we were thinking about where to start a program design, we really wanted to start with the most vulnerable, the people most at risk who really needed a, a high-quality, well-trained, coordinated response. So that's why we developed the, the care team. And you can see there's secondary supports. We are a, a county with a lot of rich services available. But as Kathy was already saying, a lot of them, you have to, like, you have to know about the program. You have to go at certain times for the program. You have to qualify for the program. And so some of that can be really challenging. And a lot of my work is trying to figure out how do we expand the supports? And Ross will talk a little bit about some of the newer initiatives that we're really trying to develop, like, beyond this, right? This is like the first thing we really wanted to create because this really is an, an important need that has to be met. And then what do you do for all the levels of care that are subacute? And how do you prevent this from happening in the first place? And we'll talk a little bit about this for this team as well. So the, the ultimate goal really of the team is to have a dedicated police IPD officer and a licensed clinical therapist that are specially trained that respond together. At this point in time, we don't have the capacity, the IPD doesn't have the capacity to have a dedicated person. It, it kind of creates an interesting research design though, because there are models where some people have decided it isn't a dedicated team. It's on a rotation. And you can see there's probably benefits and, you know, not so great things when it's a rotation. What some research has shown is when you use a rotation process, the, the whole entire police department becomes more informed about mental health needs. They become better at understanding how to respond because they learn from working with the clinician. And it, and so that can be a benefit, but when you have a dedicated team, you also have a team that has deep knowledge that responds together all of the time. And so it's sort of like playing basketball, right? Like, I throw the ball to you. We play all the time. I know you're going to catch the ball, even if I'm looking this way because you know how I play, right? Like, you have a team in a crisis situation that can be really responsive. So there's pros and cons to each model. So what we have now in the county care team is a dedicated team. What we have here right now is a rotation. It'll be interesting to see how that looks, but the, the intent, the plan had been, has been to create a dedicated team. And this was adopted in collaboration with reimagining public safety. We, as I said before, we worked a lot with Deanna Carruthers on it. And with Mona. Mona was a big part of this initial design. So really, the team's designed to help anyone with having a mental health crisis, a person with an emotional or mental health disorder, and they're disconnected from services. That tends to be a problem. People can have severe mental illness and not be very connected to services. And so they may be in a situation where, you know, they are walking into traffic or they're hearing voices that are telling them that someone's trying to hurt them. Those kinds of situations are the kinds of things this team can frequently respond to. They may be an emotional or situational crisis, such as a family conflict. They may be thinking about suicide or actively attempting suicide. And we can get this team there in time. Sometimes that depends. Crisis Negotiation Team requests during hours of operation. And for clarification on that, we do have two clinicians who are members of the Crisis Negotiation Team. I personally did the first week of, there's a week-long training in Crisis Negotiation. I sat, I did that training as well because I really wanted to understand how that team operated. We're hoping to have one more clinical person on that team. So that team is different then, and it was helpful for me to participate in the training to understand. You're calling in your Crisis Negotiation Team if you had a situation where a person might be like on the edge of a bridge and they might potentially jump, and you need people who can cordon off the street, right? And, and they can maybe get in there to physically respond to protect a person in that moment. Negotiators get an enormous amount of training, and they might be talking to that person about how, what would it take for you to step back from that ledge, right? And while our clinicians are very well-trained, negotiation training after doing the intensive one-week training is a different thing. It's very specialized. That team trains every month because our clinicians go to that training. So we do have people who are members of that team because it's important to have that mental health aspect. And so that team might say, "We, we want the care team to respond as well." So that's a way we could be used. Death-related or critical incident support, stress management issues if requested by law enforcement. So this was something IPD specifically asked for, was that there are times when they have to go out and notify somebody of a death. And this person's going to be in immediate grief situation and wanted it to be really helpful to have someone who's clinically trained to go with them when they're making notifications like that. And they can maybe link the person to some grief support services, process that experience with them in a different way that's clinically trained for that kind of a situation. There's a lot of follow-up that's going on right now. So I think someone already mentioned about 20, there, our clinician is co-responding about 20 situations a week right now. But there's also a lot of follow-up, the 24 and 48 hours after. I believe there might be people who are just showing up now at IPD just to see our clinician. So there's, a, a lot of that is really designed. You might have had a crisis today, and the research backs this, that if somebody from that team talks to the individual again within 24 or 48 hours, they're much more likely to follow through with whatever the plan is that was developed. And sometimes you might see someone at maybe their worst point in their life, they're in a crisis, and then you get to see them later and solidify and build that relationship. If that person has a crisis again, I don't see that as a failure. I see that as building supports for people so that they, there's trust there and they know that they can come. They know that when you come, you're going to respond in a certain way to them, and they're going to feel cared about and helped. And you're going to connect them and maybe reconnect them with other supports in the community to prevent further crisis from developing. So that's really a big part of the design. And of course, if there are multiple calls coming in at dispatch at any particular time, there's always a priority given to the situation that seems like there's more danger to the individuals or the community at that point in time. This is just a mock-up of, well, now actually, that's what the care team's shirt looks like, that the officer wears. That's, and you can see in that badge right there where it says Tompkins County, you can easily remove it and say, "Ithaca Police Department." So we designed a, a marker that would, could be used for both teams so that there's some way for people in the public to recognize this team and, and see it in its official function, but also be a softer uniform for people. And so they look similar, and then really the distinction is that one says Police Department and one says Sheriff's Office. And that's just the actual vehicle that they use. So it's really designed to expand access to care by linking people to community-based treatment and other supports whenever possible, reducing unnecessary hospitalization. The majority of our care team in the county, the last time I looked, 70% are being responded to without ever, there's no arrests, they're, they're not going to the hospital. They're just getting that kind of support. There are other people who voluntarily say, "You know what? I really feel like I need to go to a hospital." And then there's a small percentage that are being transported to the hospital. And in those cases, so far, we have 100% of hospitalizations. What that tells me is that we're getting the right people to the hospital. One of the concerns about emergency departments is when so many people, when the emergency department is your only solution, the emergency department is not a great experience, and you have a lot of people there. And then you might just get turned away, right? And, and you might be a family member thinking someone's going to get hospitalized, and you're really worried about them, and then they just get turned away. Well, if they have a better response, if you get a better response in the beginning, that person's never going to go to the hospital. And when people really need to go to the hospital, they're going to get admitted, and they're going to get better quality care right at the front door. And I'm hearing that both from the hospital, who feels like they're getting really good information from our team, and that's making the process work so much better there. Because that can be a really hard, going to the emergency department is, is a very, very hard, difficult experience. And if it is needed because a person really requires hospitalization, you want to make it as smooth and good and respectful as possible. So that's a big part of the goal of this team. We really want to see a decrease in the proportion of people suffering from mental illness, substance use disorders, or have special needs in our jail. We want to improve the turnaround time for law enforcement officers and the emergency department. We don't want, we want this to be an efficient process, and that's what I'm hearing it's turning into. And we want to improve relationships between law enforcement, and law enforcement, emergency department, other behavioral providers. And we want to reduce stigma and improve perception of services. You know, I was just talking to someone earlier today about the pain of severe mental illness and how I don't think there's anything comparable in physical illness. And, and people really are suffering, and we want to make sure people get access to the care and supports that they deserve. And this is just one piece of that. It takes an entire system. I think Kathy was talking a lot about that. Like, this is, this is not the end-all-be-all fix. Mental Health, Office of Mental Health in New York State says that you need a couple of components. They like to use the legs of a stool as their analogy. Someone to call. We have a very strong 988 number that Suicide Prevention and Crisis Services is the local 988, but they're also the regional 988. They have done so well that the Office of Mental Health has given them more lines to be responsive to. So we're, we're very blessed to have a local agency like that providing a place to call. Someone to come, and that's the care team, and then someplace to go. So one of the pieces we're hoping to further build out in our county, we're not there yet. We've been trying now for a couple of years. So, and it's all about funding. It's not funding just through the county. The county's put a significant portion of money towards it. It's getting more money from some Department of Health, some other grant funders, things like that. And that's to create a crisis stabilization center. The distinction between a crisis stabilization center and an emergency department is that crisis stabilization centers are voluntary. People can voluntarily go there when they feel they have needs. You can stay up to 24 hours. And you can get a lot of the same kinds of supports. You're not going to get to a hospital. But again, that's like a level of care that we don't have right now. So people then end up in the emergency department when they really could benefit from getting medications, seeing other providers, getting some nursing support, getting some other healthcare pieces added to their care. So that's, that's the next area that we're really looking to focus on, as well as some of the community-based supports that Ross will talk with you about. Feel like I can go through, and then the metrics are here. And this was really provisional. You can go to the sheriff, the sheriff's website and really see what their dashboard looks like and see the kinds of metrics that we're gathering. And we're in the process, we're working on it, of trying to figure out how to create that same thing for the care team that's in the city.
Great. Thank you very much. And Chief, I think you're the last person presenting on this. Is that correct? And then we'll take, oh, Ross, you're next. They're showing me how to change slides. Ross, are you going next, or is Chief going next? And then you're next. Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm sure everybody's familiar. I'm the chief of Ithaca. I've been here for less than a minute now. Gotten a chance to certainly meet a lot of people within the community, a lot of people within the police department, a lot of the officers. Got a chance to do some conversations and different meetings with the CJC and really start to see the reimagined policing process and a number of initiatives that were started a few years back. And in having this, this conversation today and certainly presenting before the council, I bring a few years of experience with law enforcement and a few years from my previous experience in developing the types of outreach programs. experience in developing the types of outreach programs that are essential in law enforcement. And I think, you know, we recognize especially with reimagined policing that law enforcement needs to do a better job in responding to different types of crises and critical incidents that we're, we're called to. In just a short amount of time, in two thousand and twenty-four, there's been almost forty-two-hundred calls for service that law enforcement has responded to. And I pulled just a couple of the numbers assisting a person, welfare check, overdoses, intoxication, and a psychiatric call. That's seven hundred and sixty-seven calls that law enforcement responds to. And unfortunately for us, when we're dispatched at, we don't know what call we're going to. Is it a call that's quickly resolved? And, you know, we can, we can turn over to a, you know, somebody else that's more or better trained in dealing with issues within mental health or, you know, substance use or homelessness or food insecurities. We, we don't know until we actually are able to get to the scene and actually start to do, start our pre-investigation, our investigation of what's actually occurring. Something that's worth noting and important to note, in New York State, the training program and curriculum for law enforcement, I mean, police officers go to the academy for close to seven months now, and there's another three months of on-the-job training. So there's a tremendous amount of experience that officers bring when they respond to the scene. Training in the academy consists of everything from mental health and elder care and child abuse and penal law, CPL, and, and the list, the list will go on and on. They learn these academics and then when they come back to the police department, they have on-the-job training. And they work with trained, field-trained officers to actually learn how to apply those skills. I can say in the short amount of time that I've been in Ithaca, I've seen a tremendous amount of professionalism and just caring and empathy displayed by the officers. So, for, for me anyways, I definitely want to start by saying like, you have a very professional police department that is committed to service to the community. And, you know, and I also say that, yes, we can do better and, and better in partnership, you know, ships with the number of agencies and services that are available within the county. So with that, I'll start, I had a couple of slides I had put together just to talk a little bit about what we're doing at the Ithaca Police Department, a little bit of overlap with the Public Safety Co-Response Team, maintaining and supporting the progressive changes that Ithaca Police Department is committed to and that we are working on, less than a minute I've been here. And really continuing to strengthen the accountability and systems that are in place and the work that we're doing with the community police board and the independent accountability that, that exists here in, in Ithaca. And then a little bit about like reporting structures that can enhance and kind of reaffirm that people feel that they are being treated with dignity and fairness and, and respect. So just this past February, we did roll out our, our care team. Certainly very appreciative of the under sheriff and the work that Jennifer Olin has done to get this committee or this unit up and, and started. In a short amount of time, we've received a tremendous amount of feedback, as Harmony was saying, I mean, twenty calls, unique calls a week. A lot of the things that she sees on these calls are not, they're unique calls, but they're people that are known to the mental health community. There are people that have different struggles or, or they're in between medication, maybe a homeless issue going on, and our clinician's able to make that connection and has access to resources that we don't have access to. There's obvious protections such as HIPAA and, and such that she's able to then locate the services that they're working with already or that care of a doctor that they're under, and she's able to kind of be a, a safety net. And we actually have requests from other clinicians that do want to start coming out and working with us because they recognize that, you know, the sooner we can turn that call over, especially when someone is not in crisis to the level that there needs to be police involvement, you know, potentially there's a better outcome. On the other side of that, we respond to people who have had a negative experience in mental health. So sometimes as law enforcement, we find ourselves in that advocate role in trying to put together services or trying to get the admission to the hospital that the person's asking for. So it's a unique situation that we find ourselves in within law enforcement. And we have a number of officers that are specialty-trained in, in CIT with the lead program that have the connections that are able to reach out and sometimes work, you know, through kind of unorthodox lines of communication to figure out what services somebody may, may need. So, you know, our goal really is diverting community members that are in crisis from the criminal justice system, when there's mental health issues that are driving force and interactions. And we, like I said, we recognize in, in law enforcement and with changes in bail reform in the last few years, there were people that were in the system and that was the only place they were getting treatment for mental illness. And so in bridging that gap and getting these services provided outside of the system, that, you know, we don't need to include the criminal justice system, but police are still in that kind of professional role to be able to respond and bring these services and, and de-escalate these calls before they rise to the level of, you know, somebody being injured or, or violence. We are in the process of building out our dashboard to, if you're familiar with the dashboard, the community dashboard that we have up now, this will be a, a part of that, to be able to see the activity that the care team is, is doing. And one of the things that, in discussion with the officers that are currently working with the clinician, is being able to provide a more wraparound service or similar to a hub model, a hub model, you may be familiar with, where if we can, you know, wrap somebody in services in, in different organizations that can kind of break that cycle or that somebody may be trapped in, we're in a position to be able to do that. Some of the sergeants and officers that are most involved in this work, they know the people in the community that are struggling. They're on first-name basis and I, I've seen it a couple of times where I've actually, they've introduced me to people, hey, this is so-and-so, they used to live here, now they're homeless, you know, this fell through, but it's, it's, it's eye-opening for me to see that the work that Ithaca Police Department is doing and, and my role and kind of how can I support this and how can I expand this so we are more effective in what we're doing. One of the things that, important thing I've been talking about is, is building trust, certainly when I got here, earning trust of the community, but earning trust of the police officers. You know, and getting out in the community and also partnering with CJC, which in the past and, and the history, there were questions of what, what does CJC do? Like, what does that mean to IPD? Does that mean IPD is not going to be IPD? CJC has been an incredible, incredible ally in moving a lot of these initiatives forward that we're, that we're talking about. Recently, we started planning community conversations coming up this summer, there's six days that we're looking at doing. One of the, our conversations and our planning sessions, we actually did some procedural justice training at the police department. And all of the officers have been through that training now, and one of the Fridays we actually had some representatives from CJC and from the civilian police board came in and sat in and participated in that training and the conversations. And we got a lot of, a lot of positive feedback, a lot of learning on, on both sides. Certainly, the community police board, the monthly meetings, independent investigations that, that they conduct, the feedback that they give us on policies and different initiatives that we're looking to do is an important part of that transparency and, and building trust. I had mentioned already the, the community dashboard, to be able to go and look at the types of calls we're responding, how calls are, are classified, and see through the years, like how things change and, and what the issues are. Because the police generally, like, there is proactive work that we do, but primarily we respond where we're called to respond and when we're called to respond. So the different communities that we're working with are, are communities that are asking us to, to be there and to assist. And sometimes there are solutions that we can work out, sometimes it's de-escalated beyond what a police response would be and we need to be able to make those connections and what services are needed. And as I said, and I think Josh will speak more to, more to this, in that type of a hub model, where we are following up on, on different situations that are beyond what the police can, can help with. A big component and what we're working on now with CJC as well i- is officer resilience and peer support, because we also recognize that officers, they do see a lot, they do a lot, and, you know, there is trauma that comes with a job. And we need officers to be at their best when they're making the difficult decisions that they're called to, to do on a daily basis. So we're actually reestablished our peer support team at Ithaca Police Department and we're working through the CJC with the county team and doing some co, co-training. We're also a resource to them if they need assistance or if we have a traumatic incident or something of a capacity that we're not able to respond with our own peer support, we can, we can lean on them. We're doing work with, with New York LEAP, which is an organization in New York State that is supporting first responders. We have, in the city, we have a new EAP program with a specific law enforcement or public safety competent doctors. So we have a, a lot of different work that we're doing to ensure that our officers are, are at their best when they're called to, to serve in these challenging, challenging Recruitment, we are certainly ramping up our recruitment effort, we'll be giving a new test this year. We do want to do more community recruitment. We have, I'm jumping around a little bit now, but we do have two candidates that will be going to the academy soon from Ithaca. But we want to do more, we want to be at the community events and really, you know, enhancing, you know, our, our image in the community and getting that, that buy-in. We want to attract the people that, maybe they didn't see themselves going to law enforcement, but they have an interest in doing some type of public service or they want to be in counseling or they want to work with people who suffer from substance use or... So we, we want to start to draw these different expertise in to help provide a better service to, to the community. We do have three that are in the Corning Academy now, they're doing well, they started in January, another two that'll be starting the end of this month at Broom County, and we're hoping to put two to three in Syracuse's Academy in April, as well as two, two laterals. One has started, one is in, in process. One of the things that we've been talking about in the procedural justice trainings and we've had some conversations in the community around this, and I'll certainly, I'll, I'll put it out here to the floor, law enforcement has a mission and oftentimes we, we tend to get a little lengthy and wordy because we want to accomplish like everything possible and we try to stuff everything in a mission that's really not functional. And so we try to like, the, the question I've posed to the officers is what, what do we do? What does law enforcement do? And how do we put that into a mission, like what we do that everybody knows? And that not just the community, but the officers know, like when I'm making this decision or I'm mediating a neighbor dispute, like what's my goal? You know, if I'm dealing with somebody in crisis, what's my goal? If I'm training and I'm doing defensive tactics, why am I training? And one of the things we're kind of starting to boil down here is this kind of to enhance community safety. And we can get, add a vision statement and get really crafty and how do we enhance community safety or what our goals are, but at the end of the day, when, you know, when officers respond to the scene, like what is their objective? And, and we've gotten down to this enhanced community safety is, that's it. Like how, how am I doing? How am I doing to enhance community safety? So I, I throw it out there for kind of some, some food for thought. You know, at one point we had public, but I'm like, well, public and community, like community sounds like everyone together. It's got kind of a warmer feeling, safety. Everybody wants to feel safe, but what level of safety do people want? Like who decides what level of safety? And so it's important for us in law enforcement to recognize, recognize that. We had provide up there at one point to provide community safety and somebody from the community is like, well, who are you to provide me? Like what, how, it sounds like you're forcing something upon me. So enhances where we're at, I'm still kind of, woke up this morning thinking about that, like enhance, like is there a better word? But this is, is kind of where we're at, because it's not so much changing or coming in and reinventing, but it's like, how, how do we get better at what we're doing? How do we identify that? And then how do we, you know, hold officers to that, that standard? Certainly, are we going to continue on to Josh before questions? Okay.
Yeah, you're getting a lot today, yeah. I guess so, I'll try to keep it brief. All right, thanks everybody for having me. My name's Ross, I'm relatively new to Ithaca, so I'm happy to be here and getting to know all of you. I've been working for Whole Health for about six months as a public health fellow and specifically on the mental health side of things and have been lucky enough to partake in some of these conversations. I think I might actually skip ahead just a little bit for flow and then I'll go back. So, what I'll be talking about today is two different requests for proposals that Whole Health has recently put out. You may have seen them in the, the press releases that have come out of Whole Health. One of them though, I think pairs really well with the care team, and we're calling it the Mobile Supportive Services Program. But in, for all intents and purposes, it's, it's the former Community Outreach Worker Program and the Rural Outreach Worker Program, which were both operated by Family and Children's Services of Ithaca, but funded separately. And we now have the opportunity to kind of pair them together into a single program using funding from both the, the city, the county, and the Downtown Ithaca Alliance, which you can see up here. Both of those programs have had two community outreach workers, but they've had different locations of focus. So one would be Downtown Ithaca and the other would be rural locations that have been identified by calls for welfare checks to law enforcement, specifically, you know, out in Lansing, Groton, the town of Ithaca. I think there's a hotel run that pulls in a bunch of people through DSS who are facing housing insecurity, so that's one site. And so what we have here is an opportunity to kind of pool some funds across different organizations and, and build out a non-uniformed response to what we would call like very sub-acute crises. I want to differentiate these, these are not things that will qualify for care team, these are not thing, mobile crisis-type calls, nine-one-one, these are more people who are experiencing what we're calling non-imminent mental health crises or kind of like, could be substance use, could be homelessness, could be related to, sorry, could be related to their basic unmet needs that they're experiencing. So I'm trying to get rid of this thing on the screen here. Oh, it might be over there. Yeah, okay, oh, hold on. But really the, you know, the goals of this program as we see them are to kind of enhance connections for community members to the kind of wealth of supportive services that are already here in Ithaca and Tompkins County. As Harmony was saying, this feels like a very service-rich region and, you know, calls for welfare checks might just be the fact that people are disconnected from those services that are already here. And so the mobile support services, you know, the goals of that, it's going to be a, a program that will have four community outreach workers overseen by a clinically-licensed program coordinator, and they'll be able to move around the county, two, two outreach workers focused on Downtown Ithaca as before and two focused on more rural locations. And they're And they're really just trying to meet up with people who are experiencing those non-imminent mental health crises and connect them to services. This isn't designed to be long-term intensive case management. It's really about meeting somebody while they are, you know, experiencing a stressful situation and getting them connected to relevant resources. We don't want to throw the whole kitchen sink of people, but really make sure that the resources are specific to the root causes of their crises. And given kind of all these different resources that we're hearing about, one of the goals is to enhance coordination between all of these different teams that are working throughout Ethica and Tompkins County. And we do see possibilities for this program to receive referrals from the care team or their mobile crisis team when they say, hey, like we went out there, this is a safe situation. We think it's more appropriate for you to just bring out some folks to talk to this person and deescalate the situation and then connect them to follow-up services. Kind of the outcomes of that work that we see are, you know, those connections being made and we really need to make sure that we're measuring that. You know, are we seeing successful connections to follow-up services? Are we seeing a reduced frequency of calls to law enforcement for situations that don't necessarily require law enforcement? You know, specifically in those hotspots? Are we seeing a reduced frequency of mental health crises resulting in either arrest or mandated hospitalization? As much as we can divert people from the criminal justice system and psychiatric hospitalization, we should. And then reduce frequency of public disturbances that are, you know, rooted in basic unmet needs in our community. And so as I mentioned, the focus population for this program, it's not people who are experiencing imminent risk of harm to themselves or others. It's not people who should go to the hospital, who might have a severe medical condition. It's really for people who are distressed and seeking support due to crises in their lives. But those crises can't be so acute that a law enforcement response or the mobile crisis team is more appropriate. And they can't be so acute that de-escalation techniques would be effective or would be ineffective in that moment. And so the scope of work is really that low-acuity crisis intervention, de-escalation, mediation, and emotional support. It might be providing basic supplies to meet needs, could be food supplies, blankets, clothing. There will be at least one van involved in this program, you know, that can transport supplies and also take people to medical appointments. We'll have tablets to assist with submitting applications for services, telehealth sessions, as well as just connecting people to internet access when they need it. And then, you know, some role in intervention and mediation of community disturbances. And that could be, you know, coaching stakeholders on de-escalation techniques. It could be direct intervention and trying to avoid escalation of a situation to the point where law enforcement is required. And as Kathy mentioned, historically, this program has been limited to Monday through Friday, nine to five, you know, typical business hours. That is definitely something that we will be expanding in this program. We're looking at, you know, some inclusion of business day evenings and weekend hours just to expand the service times that this program is available. And in terms of locations, this is kind of how it breaks down. There'll be the City of Ethica Business District, West End, and the West State Street Corridor. And then those kind of hotspots that we mentioned in rural parts of the county, including some apartment complexes and a hotel. So just as far as timeline for this RFP, this RFP did close today and will be conducting our review process over the next several weeks. We have a review committee formed and we'll be going through scoring that. If we select one, if it satisfies the requirements of the RFPs, we might conduct interviews. And then the goal was to make our final selection in the beginning of April and get this up and running quickly. And so now I'll just jump back real quick to the other RFP, which is a little bit more distinct from the previous programs. So this is really a housing and intensive supports program. This RFP has closed and we've completed our review process, but it will need to go through approval of the legislature. But just to give you some background, the money for this program is from the opioid settlement fund. There have been a couple of different forms of that. This is specifically money that will be coming to what's called the local governing unit, which is ostensibly Whole Health. And we'll be providing funding through the next 16 years in varying amounts. And so what we're, and one important part is that this has also been an opportunity to collaborate more closely with the city. There was a resolution and memorandum of understanding that was approved, I think, in December to combine funds across the city and Whole Health. And so we have a pretty sizable chunk of change that we're trying to really invest upfront in some sort of housing and intensive supports program. There's some stipulations on the funding, but the expectation is that most of this will go towards residents of the City of Ethica, just given the housing needs and substance use, mental health needs here. So we have this money from, it comes through the Office of Addiction, Supports, and Services. The way that we arrived at the program that I'll describe in a minute was through crosswalking the approved uses and priority areas for those funds with the Tompkins County Mental Hygiene Local Services Plan. And I won't go into it, but essentially there are a bunch of priorities that we have locally across housing, clinical supports, non-clinical supports, cross-system services that line up fairly well with treatment, housing, and recovery priorities from Oasis. And what the Community Services Board kind of came up with and recommended is providing emergency housing and intensive support in addition to streamlined service coordination. And this is specifically for people who have been kind of living in a cycle of crisis and we're really trying to provide a stable platform to move into more traditional forms of care and permanent supportive housing. And we expect that this program will support improving housing stability and retention over all health and wellbeing and then reducing the use of crisis response services to meet basic needs and possibly going to the emergency department, as well as frequency of interactions with law enforcement for people who have severe substance use and mental health disorders. And our program design really stems from kind of some basic ideas that in order to provide that sort of stability, we need to create structure that has a place to live, someone to help, and the right support at the right time. And through doing some research and interviews and meeting with subject matter experts here in Ethica, kind of what we landed on is low-barrier housing, trying to pull in as many parts of housing first, the housing-first philosophy as we can. It's, this is temporary housing, which typically housing first is permanent, but there are no sobriety requirements for this housing. There is no requirement to participate in services beyond meeting regularly with your case manager. And in terms of someone to help, we do have that case manager's position, specifically an intensive case manager, which has some basic tenants, probably the most important, which is a caseload of less than 10. So this is making sure that the people who are in this program are getting a high level of support. We're hoping one meeting per week that could taper over time. In addition, there's a peer support element, bringing in somebody with lived experience who has dealt with substance use, mental health disorders, and is stable in their own recovery and can help somebody navigate the systems that, you know, maybe access treatment, maybe access some other support. And then the idea that people, you know, they might not be ready for services, but when they are, we want to get those rapidly, want to kind of strike while the iron is hot. And part of that is developing MOUs with different care providers, also creating streamlined processes within the program to get people that access quickly. And just to give you an idea of how we're going about getting people into this program, we're making use of the coordinated entry process that HSC does here, which is really robust and a lot of the local housing providers utilize it. Essentially, they have a pre-screening questionnaire as well as a vulnerability index that they'll fill out with potential clients. And based on that, they're able to prioritize for people for different types of housing. This type of housing is intended to be just kind of a level below a residential treatment facility. Like it's basically for people who need a high level of care, but maybe not that high. And so there's different ways to prioritize. And in addition to that, we'll need to include some sort of clinical assessment or clinical history. And so that's really our process for this. That RFP, like I said, it has closed. We've completed our review and we'll be sending our selection to the Health and Human Services Committee at the legislature soon. And it'll have to be approved by that committee and then the budget and capital and personnel committee. And then we can get into our contracting process and hopefully begin implementation in the summer.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone, for the detailed presentations. We did want counsel to have a comprehensive update on what has been done so far and where we still need to go. So I think that's provided a significant amount of detail to inform this conversation. I invite my colleagues to share their questions, comments, and requests from the presenters. I would ask if you would just stipulate, if you have a specific person you're addressing, who that is? So we can share the mic because there are four folks and we have limited microphones. I'll recognize first all the person brown and then all the person hand sharp.
First of all, I want to give you a hand, right? Wonderful presentation, but I'm really hurt. I'm sitting here watching a sign that says all lives matter. I can't do nothing about that because constitutional rights, right? You can do that. So I can't get up and walk out. We're talking about reimagining public safety. Did y'all forget the executive order 203? Not once did you mention nobody about why this executive 203 order was put in place, right? It was put in place because of what was happening around this country to black and brown people. It was put in place for us to begin to build a relationship with officers and to reimagine what it is. You talked solely about mental health, substance abuse, those things. Nothing about cultural sensitivity for none of these organizations. All of these programs that I've seen up here is already happening in this community, many of them, right? And so I'm very disappointed and I know, I know in my heart of heart, y'all mean well. I know the chief Kathy Zona, I know y'all mean very well. But the response, the people who wrote in about reimagining public safety, they asked for community unarmed responders. What they meant was to see somebody out there that they could identify with and feel safe with. None of that was in here. You talked a lot about many things, but we never got back to the reason why we have reimagining public safety. But what we did do is learn, what I learned here is how I'm going to be supporting the Whole Health program to get every grant and anything that they put in. But why is it connected to reimagining public safety? Because you said nothing about working with community members to train them to have those positions. So I'm really, like, wonderful presentation, however, I don't, and maybe other people can't see it. However, I'm a black woman who watched black people killed in the street. I understand why Cuomo did the executive order 203, right? And that was reimagining and we imagined for Whole Health? We got a whole program for them, ready to go, moneyed down, right? But I don't see, I haven't spoke to any of y'all about community. I spoke with Kathy Zona, I spoke with the chief, but I've never spoke to no one from Whole Health to talk about reimagining public safety and what it means to the black community, the black and brown community. Y'all got all these programs that y'all have put together, that programs that we have in our community. If you, anyway, I'm not going to go on because I got to keep looking at that sign, all lives matter. And we know if all lives matter, we wouldn't have had to have executive order 203. Thank you.
All the person hand sharp. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I saw your hand. All the person keel.
Thank you all so much for coming. I really seriously enjoyed and got out a lot out of your presentations. I am particularly interested in the care team. I think that's like great work. Thank you guys so much for doing that. It's so needed in this community. And Chief, I really appreciated your comments on community building. Thank you so much. And just continue doing the great work. Appreciate it. Thank you.
First Matos?
So this is directed towards the chief. And this may not be a question that you're able to answer right now, but pretty much going off of what Ms. Phoebe was just saying, I would love to know how trainings are being looked at differently so that we're ensuring that our officers aren't harming those folks who are getting detained? Or how are we making sure that, you know, we're training or the training that we're implementing to these officers when they're stepping into these situations, they're removing their biases, whether it be due to the background knowledge that they have of the person or within their own like beliefs?
So that's a great question. And certainly, I just, when I put today's presentation together, a lot of that was based off of reimagined policing. And part of the discussion and part of procedural justice, for us, it's a huge, huge part of like what shapes law enforcement and where's the disconnect? I've never met a police officer, a new officer, that sat in an interview and did not express a wholeheartedly desire to serve the community. And so part of the procedural justice training is bringing officers back to that first day and recognizing that we all have the same goals with the community. The community has the same goals as police and we share these same goals across this country. And we share the same goals within the agency. We talk about how the job shapes people, how the experiences that officers respond to and deal with in day in, day out affect us. We talk about procedural justice and why, what it is, why it's so important. It is what good police officers do. And we have these conversations to remind ourselves and when, you know, even on your worst day, that how important it is to giving people a voice and being neutral in the decisions that you make, showing respect even when you don't get it, giving the respect, it doesn't cost us anything. And sometimes, sometimes it changes somebody. And then the trustworthy portion and doing the things that we say we're going to do. And we have a module on and a number of members of the community have sat through and discusses with us on history and policing and the things that have happened in this country since this country's founding. And certainly, as recently as the murder of George Floyd and things that continue to happen. And so that is kind of like an understanding for officers in these are things that happen. They have happened here, they have happened in communities where, you know, they happened in community where I came from. Recognizing that and things that we may not understand that we did not experience ourselves and how important it is to bring that empathy into any interaction and try to slow things down and make decisions based on facts, not the quick reaction that sometimes happens in these challenging situations. And so I certainly, I appreciate everybody's comments. And so I, I certainly, I appreciate everybody's comments and feedback. I would really love to get together. Okay.
All the person for Gritio.
Thank you so much, everybody for coming. And congratulations on the recruitment efforts for IPD. That sounds like maybe 10 new officers potentially. Just to speak to, to Phoebe's questions about building relationships and, and the relationships between people within the department and neighborhoods and communities. Just can you project a little bit toward the future as we begin to build up the numbers again in the department? And the kinds of things that you're envisioning you would be able to do that would potentially help in those areas?
I mean, the sky's the limit. I mean, certainly there, every interaction we have is an opportunity to make a new connection. And any, anything we do, even in the worst situations we respond to is typically people don't call the police because it's a good day, somebody's in crisis. So how we handle those crises each time is important to make that connection. We talk about something towards the end of procedural justice, kind of a, a community bank account, so to speak. And when you're having an interaction, are you making a deposit or withdrawal? And deposits typically are much smaller than withdrawals. And the thing with withdrawals is they don't necessarily come from this community. They come, come from any community across the country. So I guess more specifically and just participating in different events. You know, we have the coffee, the compliment that we go out. We have the different church events we go to. There were a number of events that I went through this last month in, in February that were very eye-opening and educational for me. So the more that we can have these interactions and these conversations and, and share these different ideas and points of view. I mean, that's kind of like, that's, that I guess is what law enforcement does. Is ensuring that we are able to have these continuous conversations and share ideas and have opposing views and work towards better, better solutions.
So I have all the person win next.
Yeah, first I'll congratulate the chief on local hiring. I'm a little upset because someone who's risen through the ranks of TCAP to be a great leader is joining the force. And so losing someone there, gaining someone here, that's fine. I think my question is for the whole health folks. So we hear a lot that a small number of people often are responsible for a large percentage of the calls. And I'm just curious about the resource allocation to like a handful of, of heavy hitters and, and how, you know, case management can mitigate that impact on, on our resources.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the intention behind our housing program. It's, it's really, and I think sort of that clinical assessment piece in our referral process is really trying to identify, you know, who are the, the people who are going, having to go to the emergency department a lot because their needs aren't being met otherwise? And making sure that we're providing the highest level of support that we can specifically to those people. And so that's, that's sort of the intention also behind keeping that case management low, really low. 10 or less is sort of the best practice and, and providing enough time in housing to stabilize before moving on to whatever the next step is.
I do have another thing too. So we had folks from, I think it's called the Vera Institute come and speak to members of council in the Tonka County Legislature. And a question that came up was, and I hear this all the time too, was like, what, what do you do with someone who doesn't want to be housed? You know, for a variety of reasons, whether it's trauma, where they just like it, they prefer to live outdoors in an encampment. Something they brought up was that it takes, it can take literally dozens of contacts before you convince them like to, to move into a, to a shelter, you know, housing. And I don't know if you can speak to that experience and how, how you would address the challenge we have in, in convincing people to leave encampments and into permanent housing.
I think that's also sort of the goal of, of the mobile support team, although it's not that long-term case management. It is, is kind of brief interactions. It's really getting people connected to the services that can provide that follow-up engagement. You know, getting people connected to coordinated entry or the continuum of care. You know, there, there are a ton of great service providers out here who can meet with people more regularly than this program might be able to. And so it's really like the role of that program is to make that first connection that can then be the point where somebody is having long, you know, follow-up case management or even just conversations with other outreach providers.
I have all the person Shapiro and then all the persons brown and Matos.
Well, thanks for the presentations. I very much loved learning about the direction the Department of Whole Health is heading. And now we served on the board together when it was the Department of Mental Health and helped with that conversion. So it's nice seeing you again, Harmony. And I'd love to maybe get in the weeds with you on a lot of the things that you talked about in another setting. So hopefully you'll, hopefully I'll reach out to you and you'll have some time. My question though, and this maybe relates, maybe is a question for Deb. Because that was a really fantastic presentation about the work being done with the Department of Whole Health. But we received a whole lot of supporting documentation in our packet relating to reimagining public safety. And that didn't feel like a reimagining public safety presentation. So my question maybe for Deb is like, I'm, I'm hearing this being brought here. Is this a way of prepping us? Is there an ask in the future that I'm, is there a connection? I'm like, I'm, I'm sorry. Is like, is there a financial ask that's going to be made of us some point in the future that this is prepping us for?
I think what we wanted you to have was the full context of what already exists. I think what the, the previous council asked for was some version of an unarmed unit. So what we wanted you to see today is Kathy's work that she's been doing. Then we wanted you to make sure that you had an understanding of what was happening with the Community Outreach Worker Program because that had come up again as a possible, either, you know, would the unarmed unit be an expansion of that program? Or should it be something different? Or what else should it be? So we wanted to make sure that you had the full and comprehensive update of where all of those other things were. So yes, I guess this is kind of a starter conversation or a prep conversation. So you understood what all of those pieces were. And I'm not sure how much time, more time the mayor wants to dedicate to this today. But the sort of questions for council part on that memo were essentially two things. To get some direction from this group of council. One of the other sort of mandates, I guess, or things that council passed the last time was this deputy city manager for public safety. So we're going to need some guidance on what does that look like? We need to be able to bring a job description back. And one of the things we wanted to talk about today was would it make sense to, to sort of expand the portfolio of what that person could work on to make sure that we're doing this integration and collaboration? There is an intense amount of overlap between a lot of these issues. So is there a way, you know, that we could take advantage of putting a position in the city that could also help us get to the coordination and collaboration piece? And then the next step really is what do we want to do in terms? The reason that we kind of put the budget information in there, in that memo for you was so you could see what had already been set aside for this work. And then we're going to need to go away and put like a full-blown proposal to come back to you. But I think we just wanted some guidance from this body after you heard what existed to, you know, what do you want us to work on next? What, what do we need to start on next? You want us to start with the job description for the deputy city manager? Do you want us to start fleshing out unarmed? We also wanted to give our new chief an opportunity to kind of get the lay of the land and see what was going on and, and start to work. You know, one of the things we have to remember, the reason you had all those other documents is a lot of the work that you heard described here today were updates on those joint city-county recommendations. You know, we jointly fund the CJC for the purpose of making sure all of those recommendations are also being followed up on. So I think today was a smattering of where we are with all of the recommendations related to RPS. And then we're going to need to drill down into what you want to do with the resources that previous council has set aside for this purpose.
Okay. So just, I appreciate that. Thank you, Deb. I would just say for me then thinking about how these might connect to some response in RPS, it would be helpful for me to know, like you mentioned, all the calls that cares is going on. We know some data about the outreach team. I'd love to know more demographics. Are you like spending all the time in the encampments? Are the care teams going to school? You know, are there like, what do, what do those calls look like demographically in some way that we would be able to see if it is having an impact in some of the different communities that are looking for unarmed response?
That information's on the sheriff's website. They have a lot of data on the demographics as well as the kinds of situations that they're responding to. And we're going to create that with IPD as well. We're in the process of doing that. So you'd have that information.
Person Brown.
I am so really positively hurt right now that you couldn't use, my community, my black and brown community asked for unarmed responders that look like them. I haven't seen nobody in here look like them yet. I am so hurt right now. I'm so hurt and disappointed how this game is playing out again. Yes, we want a, a, a city manager that's working just on reimagining public safety work. Yes, we still want a, a response team, unarmed response team. We didn't ask for whole, whatever y'all are, we asked for community. And this is hurting to sit here in this room tonight and see how we being manipulated to, to gravitate, gravitate to something to say this is what, and, and, and all I heard tonight was mental health, substance abuse. And how does that relate to black and brown people who have been unfairly treated, right? How does that relate to it? But you know what? It is what it is. We've survived this far since we arrived on these shores and will continue to survive.
All the person Matos.
This is, this is my questions for the chief again. I'm wondering how we're using the data that is given to us by the community police board during their investigations to further our trainings and education with the officers.
Which bad data is specifically are?
Like, because when a community has a complaint regarding the police, they file through the community police board, correct?
Oh, so complaints.
Yeah.
They go through. So the complaints that come through last year and, correct me if I'm wrong, 19 complaints that came through last year. This year, there's been two complaints. So I mean, the data that comes through, there's, there's so little data. It's almost a more of an analysis of what are the complaints and what's coming through? And what's the outcome of those complaints and how are those calls handled? So I mean, that is obviously something that we're, it, it's not that, they're specific cases that we can actually look at and, and learn from.
And so I guess now another question off of that is how are we communicating to the public that if they do have a problem with the complete, the police or have a complaint within, with their interaction, that they can go to the community police board and file?
So right now that's up on the, the website, on the police website and how to make a complaint and a process. And then the community police board also has that same process. But certainly we can always do more to get that information out. And as we're talking now, I'm thinking like, we could put it on our Facebook page. Like we're starting to re-engage our, our social media and our departmental image. And so we could put that right out there. Here you go. Here, here it is. And put that reminder out, you know, on a regular basis. Because people should know that there is a way, there is, you know, if, if there's a complaint or concern or they're not happy how a call was handled, like they, they should know that there is, there is a way to, to, to do that, to communicate that. And that's part of the transparency.
All the person same praise.
So this is to all of you. What I'm hearing is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that really what we're trying to do here between the county and the city is sew together a sort of quilt of support for people at different levels of need and at different times in different areas of need.
Essentially, it's being able to, you know, wrap around services for what's needed and what the situation is. There's no situation that is exactly the same. They're, they're all unique. So for us, it's making that connection and providing a service as needed when, when we respond.
Yeah, I understand all of this is still in process and don't want to take up too much time. So I'm not going to push this, but I know after this, what I'm going to be thinking about is where the holes in that process are and what, what needs aren't going to be responded to by the different pieces we're putting together. And I hope all of you are thinking about that.
I appreciate that.
All the person win.
Just to answer Deb's question, I didn't make our legislative priority list. But I do want to really focus on hiring that deputy city manager for public safety. I'm in favor of expanding it in the way that was described in that memo, especially to include homelessness. Cause I think they are intertwined, especially with everything that was discussed today. Do you have a question for the mayor? So part of like the big list of things that were part of the resolution that we passed last year includes a public safety standing committee, which in light of the fact that we don't really have them anymore. I don't know if, if we, if you've thought about how we're going to re-approach that.
I have. I think it's encompassed in, in my view, in the, the special topics meetings where we're able to dedicate like concentrated time to focus on this. I want to elevate what all the person brown and yourself just said and draw, draw us back to the memo where I'm hearing two members of council talk specifically about the deputy city manager job description. And I think we should, not that I am attempting to wrap up our conversation, though I do think maybe by eight o'clock, we should be prepared to move on to the next presentation. I do think getting a good sense from the body, what we do want to actually have the administration prioritize as their next steps is the most helpful thing. And I'm hearing from both all the persons that they have a clear vision of what that should be. And I, I would encourage other members to share their views if they concur or are different so that we can help arrive at a conclusion for next steps. And this is not, while a very helpful, informative presentation, this is not just an informative presentation, but rather gives policy direction to the administration. With that, I'll recognize all the person keel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I, I wanted to reiterate, I think it is so critically important that we're focusing on our vulnerable populations. You know, these are people who are sleeping outside in the winter and are overdosing on drugs. As some of you know, I've worked in EMS for multiple years in Ithaca. And, you know, I got very close to many, many people who died in Ithaca, who were brave and, and wonderful human beings. And I only wish that these services had been here, you know, five, 10, 15 years earlier. And I'm so glad that they're getting implemented now. I do think that all the person brown's point is really important though. And I think that we should also maybe request a secondary presentation about specifically about reimagining public safety. Cause I think this work is really, really important, but I do think that, that that conversation needs to happen too. And so I do actually have a question. I'm not just going to make statements all night, I promise. So does the care team, is there any plans for the care team to transport patients to the hospital in, if that is a necessity or if that's needed? I know that IPD has transported some, some psych patients in the past. If like emergency services aren't needed, I'm just wondering if that's a consideration.
And so currently the care team, the clinician is able to write 945 pickups. So they can coordinate that, that type of transport.
Would they transport them in the unarmed responder vehicle to the hospital? Or would it still go through an ambulance?
So our clinician is with police officers, as is the sheriff's department is with a sheriff's officer. But it's, the transport typically we, we would do with an ambulance.
Okay. I definitely, I mean, just from my personal experience, I know that our EMS system, for worse, no for better there, is incredibly stressed. And I think there are factors that go into that, but I don't need to get into them right now. And I know that it's been really successful and IPD has transported 941 and 945 cases in the past. And so I would definitely. Um, and so I would definitely recommend at least looking into the feasibility of that going forward.
I, I mean, I think that's definitely an important conversation for us to have and continue in our time. Certainly that in the past, there's been issues where people have been transported to the hospital that the hospital's a higher level of care that they're not at, they don't need. They might need more of a, you know, a lower response. Uh, and also, I mean, we've dealt with, uh, patients over the year that don't want the ambulance. They want the police to, to drive them, uh, because of that relationship that, that's built, uh, over calls and, and different, uh, responses.
I'm sorry, if you could just, for the public being able to hear, if you could just speak into the microphone.
Right now, we typically, uh, look at the situation. So, like you said, some people don't want to go by an ambulance because there's costs associated with that. So, they prefer law enforcement to transport. Some people really want to go by ambulance and depends on the situation, which is the better approach. But our county care team has taken people, uh, that are, that's the best response that they feel is necessary. And then as a result of that, then we don't have to deploy an ambulance if there's no concerns about physical safety.
So, any further comments from colleagues? And again, encouraging with a, with an eye towards helping provide some clear direction for next steps in the administration. As I've noted, we have two, uh, all, all the persons who have clearly stated a, a, a priority that I agree with. All the person Shapiro.
I'll just say today's presentation didn't help me gain any clarity on what next steps to offer to the city manager. I don't know, I wasn't part of the conversation with the deputy city manager. So, I don't have that information in my foundation about why those decisions were made. So, certainly if another presentation would help with that, where it was specific about the decisions, about the unarmed response team and things like that, I would feel then I could offer more direction. I don't feel that I can do that today.
All the person.
I would, I would concur with that completely. I don't feel like I have enough information and really understand. I mean, Phoebe, I think all of the points that you're making, it, and I'm trying to like figure out how that all filters in with, with all of this. Um, and I just don't feel clear in my mind now about what our, all of our objectives are, how we were going to reach our objectives. I thought that an unarmed response team was central to the reimagining public safety, that it was a way to ensure that, um, that there was not a police response when there needed to be a mental health response. Um, that's a very simplistic way to say it. Um, so I feel like I really don't have enough information to know what that relationship would be, how those, how all of these things would dovetail. Like, how would IPD, uh, and IPD management dovetail with the deputy city manager and all of those details? So, I'd, I would not feel ready to move forward with that without a lot more information. And also just because I want to make sure that we're, we're focusing and getting what we think we're, what we thought we were going to be getting. I, I have some questions about that now. I, I also have one other question, sorry. Um, you said that there's, um, the sheriff's clerk handles the calls. How else is the sheriff's office, um, involved in this?
Um, in, in reimagining public safety?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, um, the order that the sheriff's clerk, the county, um, elaborated certain. But most of those things had to do with resource sharing and allocations. Um, so the sheriff's office should speak more directly towards what they're doing. But they have a similarly aligned officer and care, um, deputy and care officer that respond to calls. Um, but as, as to, um, what all person Brown brought forward, they have an unarmed telephonic response to those who do not want to interact with the police, but still want to report criminal behavior and those types of things. Not at all to say, um, that that is, is all that it can be. Um, what I'm hearing the ask for consistently in the communities, probably that I've spoken to so far, is exactly what all the person Brown brought forward, is to engage in a process that brings a team together that is formalized and, um, but to comprise largely of community members uh, that are recognized to communities and others, so that they, that trust that's already there can be counted on in times that are not mental health related, that are not, the gap, um, shows up in if, if the call for service isn't about mental health or behavioral health issues, then Thomas County Public Health Program isn't going to respond to that and shouldn't. And right now, then the only other alternative is to call law enforcement if there's some other issues around, um, say it's a, a low level criminal trespass or something like that. Where it gets convoluted, when we talk about standing up unarmed, unarmed response, and this is where the conversation has gone into that, sort of led into that analysis paralysis, is you don't know what you've got until you get there. So, the co-response model as a, as a foundational starting point might not be the answer that we're looking for, but it is a, uh, a stepping stone towards potentially having more parallel service versus a co-response, law enforcement and unarmed responder, not mental health. If, um, so reimagining public safety is encompassed a lot of recommendations and a lot of what was presented here tonight went towards those directives that were within the purpose of itself. What's missing is that unarmed response and getting it defined and getting it, uh, coalesced into some forward movement. And whether that's a, an additional co-response model that's not mental health focused, but it is focused on other, uh, community engagement efforts, or whether that is a standalone unit that is, uh, potentially a resource to officers that are called to a service and realize this is not a law enforcement call for service, this is a community issue. Maybe we can get you connected with this community response. This level of safety, I think, if it's, uh, if it's focused back, finally developing this unarmed response that's complete community members. Because you don't know, the, the call comes in the nine one one center, it's an assist, uh, the public, you don't get any other information that, and it can, you go there and it can be my dog is loose and it can go there and it can be my son goes to prison. Um, but you just don't have the information until you get there. But that's where, that's where I've been asked to come in and try to help.
Sorry to interrupt. If you could just make sure your microphone is on. Sorry about that.
I'm very sorry. Uh, I thought it was green. Um, so that, that, that would be my, um, my directive is to try to coalesce those conversations and get something moving forward, uh, that answers those. It may not be perfect. It may have to evolve into what we ultimately want, um, or think that we want. Uh, but it, it is also important to not lose that there is no unarmed response unit for things that are not mental health related.
Just recognize myself quickly. Um, I would ask, uh, colleagues if they could provide, um, some specificity as to what additional information that they need. Uh, certainly, we could always have an additional conversation. Um, I am personally rather loathe to defer the decision to provide additional direction, uh, in the absence, I mean, we talked about analysis paralysis repeatedly. Um, I, I, I would certainly oppose waiting further. I mean, I think just commending everyone to the agenda packet from this evening uh, and to the all the persons' points earlier, there's a very clear, um, set of action items that came out of, I mean, this includes several resolutions that council has passed, but there's a very clear action item coming out of last May, uh, that includes some specificity around these things. And I think to the all the, perhaps to the all the person's point, um, if, if there is a dearth of information on something that you think is germane to this, that may be because we haven't gotten there yet. And I think what the administration is requesting from council is that direction on which of the myriad items here should be prioritized. Again, I'll, I'll lend my voice to the all the persons that I do think, um, finalizing that, uh, chief administrative role support is probably a, a, a really important step, given the, uh, level of coordination, as the city manager said, that will, that this, uh, this domain of work will require. Um, and I'm not at all suggesting that all the persons should not receive additional information if that's what they need, but if they could provide some specificity as to what that is, um, so that we can deliver it to you. Uh, all the person, uh, I'm sorry, all the person Hand Sharp has not spoken. And then all the person Matos.
Um, I just wanted to say that I'm in support of, um, moving forward with a job description and, you know, what, what the deputy city manager would actually, um, do in an expanded role. And, um, I may have missed this, but I'm also, we talk a lot, we talk about unarmed response units, but there's no funding for that, apparently. So, um, that, that I think we have to address, you know, that we have something that we keep coming back to, but there's a line here that says there's no, there's currently no sustainable funding in the budget for this. So, um, that seems like a, like a disconnect.
All the person Matos, and then I've got a bunch of you.
Um, just going back to like the whole filing of the complaints, I went on the, um, city website and I went to the IPD tab to try to like just navigate that. And there is nothing on the website that I can see where you can go and file a complaint with the community police board. So, I'm saying that to say that as we're moving forward with this reimagining public safety process, how we're communicating information to the, the, the public and the community and how they're able to access them has to be one of the focal points.
Next, I have all the person Shapiro.
Um, thank you for the direct question of what you're looking for. And to Chris's point, I am, I want to know, um, how this is being funded. And what I mean when I say that is what are we trimming? Because I don't, um, at face value, think the idea of adding six, seven, eight new positions without trimming is, uh, where we should start the conversation. So, I want to know what's, what's in that conversation of where, what are we negotiating as far as reducing expenses if we're going to talk about growing our government services?
Next, I have all the person win.
Um, excuse me. Uh, yeah, it might be helpful to, to go over a little bit of the history. Um, because if you read the joint city council, sorry, city county plan, um, that Savante and Jason Molino and their group put together, and then the city working group plan, which had very ambitious goals about like a whole new department with two sub-departments. And then last year, uh, when we formed the working group, uh, council working group, um, where in light of legal, labor, um, you know, charter issues, we determined, you know, there wasn't really a path to a whole new department with, with someone at the top. Um, also desire not to have too many layers of, of, of middle management. And so that's how we arrived at the deputy city manager position. But they would still ostensibly have that same role that, um, I think we came up with the title, superintendent of public safety. Um, have many of those same roles, because we did need someone to coordinate, um, armed IPD versus unarmed crisis responder and to design that department. So, for me, that position is the linchpin in designing that group of unarmed responders, including where to even place them in the city. Is it like a whole new department? Can they be placed within GAC? Like, we have a whole bunch of questions that deferred to someone whose expertise, um, must be defined what their role is by that city manager. And so that's why it's very important to me. There are startup, um, costs that we set aside too. I think that's something we can dive into, like, I, I think the concern is that there's no sustainable funding going forward after like the first year of having three or four unarmed responders. That is, that is definitely a question we have to answer. But, but we did, the count, previous councils have set aside money to, to start that up.
Thank you, old person. And then the next person I have is all the person Keel.
Uh, yeah, thank you. I, so I'm a little bit, um, I know I wasn't involved in the May conversations about the deputy, deputy city manager for public safety. Um, but it seems like to me that like, and I, I said this about the engineering stuff too. It seems like we keep adding administrative bloat when what we should be doing is we should be focusing that financial, those finances towards on the ground people who are doing stuff, like unarmed responders. Um, and also, and I, I don't want to put any pressure on you, chief. I, um, I know you have a whole list, a laundry list of, uh, responsibilities, but it's like, we have a public safety executive, right? Who is the chief of police, right? And I don't know where unarmed responders go in terms of, as you were just saying, if they go in GAC or anything, anything else. But like, the chief of police is the executive for public safety. That's what the chief of police is. And so, you know, and I'm also like, I'm also very cognizant of the fact that we just had another nonprofit who's been supporting people in Ithaca close down, shutter its doors in the last month. Um, and there are multiple clients of that, you know, many, many clients, tens, tens if not maybe over a hundred, I don't know how many clients, a lot of clients, um, who are just like no longer have anywhere to go. Um, and the name of that organization is escaping me right now. Um, yes, thank you so much. Um, and it's like, we have organizations in Ithaca who are not able to financially support themselves and we're hiring another administrative position, um, when we should be putting people on the ground to do work in our community. And that's my position. I know I wasn't involved in the conversations in May, but, um, it just feels like we're just keeping adding stuff to the top line. How many people could we hire with the city, the deputy city manager's budget? Like, how much, probably a six-figure salary right there or just below. Um, what?
Probably two.
Two? Okay. Um, yeah, anyways.
I have all the person Fabrizio, all the person Brown, and then all the person Hand Sharp.
Well, I agree with very much of what you said, Patrick. Um, and again, I wasn't involved in the conversations, obviously, so I'm, I'm missing a lot of information. But, um, I think I would want to be better convinced like why we would need another level of administration. Um, I don't see how we would advertise a job right now and we're not really sure what this would look like. And, and, and then even, maybe even more importantly, how we would fund it in the long term. I don't see how we, um, I do think we're going to have to make really difficult choices because I don't think we can just keep adding and adding and adding to the city budget. So, prioritization is going to need to, to happen. If, if setting up a whole new department, do we have a projection for how much that would cost? What are we looking at? It's, it's not, you know, it's not really good enough to just feel like we have startup funding. We're talking about sustained funding. So, I think we have to be really clear about why we need something, what we need and how we're going to fund it. Um, so I, I would be very uncomfortable moving, uh, toward doing this right now. Sorry.
Just for council's edification, um, the deputy city manager of public safety is funded in the budget already. Um, all the person Brown.
That is one thing I wanted to say. They're already funded. It's already in the budget.
I understand that.
All the person.
Yeah, it's already in the budget. And you know what? This is some, this is, I don't know if for y'all, you talk, keep talking about reunite and getting together and supporting one another. This here is something that would really show black and brown community that we care, that we hear them. Because you find no problem spending lots of money. We just gave a million dollars away, uh, a few weeks ago, I forgot to who. But what I'm, I'm talking about is the money is there, right? We asked for this. This is something that maybe people don't, we're, and maybe you should go back and read the original reimagining public safety, uh, uh, report that they put out because they was asked to come together and, uh, and say what they need and what they want. Uh, okay.
Uh, uh, all the person, you have the floor and we have, and we have a list. So, all right, all the person Matos.
Um, I would also like to say, since we're talking about funding, is that there is a such thing as reallocating the budget in the police department. At the end of the day, we are spending almost three hundred thousand dollars on a police fleet every year. Um, so there are, there are adjustments that we can make in order to have unarmed respond, um, a respond team, for sure. And I do support that.
All the person Hand Sharp was next.
Uh, Patrick, to your point, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but, um, I don't think we fund, we don't fund positions like at the alcohol drug council, you know? So, it's like sort of apples and oranges in the way I understand it. If we're talking about, um, city staff, to city staff that would be on the ground, yes. But, um, But, correct me if I'm wrong.
So then all the person Win, and all the person Fabrizio, and then all the person St. Perez is the last word on this.
Just another piece of this too, is that it was really important, you know, we had a council that disagreed on a whole bunch of things, but one thing we kind of all agreed on was that it was very important that the unarmed crisis response team was not housed within IPD. And that it was separate from the culture and that their leader be outside of, of IPD and traditional law enforcement. And so I hear you, all the person Keel, but that was an intentional design element of it. And yeah, it, it does cost more. And, and again, we moved to this role because there was concern that we were adding under the, the plan that came out of the, the working group with the Center for Policing Equity, that there were, we're adding another layer. If we were going to create a superintendent of public safety and then move IPD underneath that, create a sibling organization. This is a little cleaner, but that was just some context, that was the goal.
All the person Fabrizio.
I guess what I'm saying is I would like to see what the projected budget would be for this and how we would make an adjustment some other place. It may be that this is the thing that, that needs to be prioritized, but I understand that there's some money in the budget right now. But also have to understand that we are dealing with a level of unaffordability in the city. And, and we do need to keep that in mind. It's renters, it's property owners, it's, it's everybody. So yeah, you might have this amount of money in the budget this year, but what is it going to be the next year, the next year, and next year after that? And how, what does that do to our overall expenses? What adjustments would we need to make? If we decide like that's the priority and that's what we need, then, then we have to get a look and we would have to get from the chief, I would think, and the city manager and whoever else, where those potential adjustments would need to be. And I think we have a responsibility, a fiscal responsibility to the residents here to, to do that. So that's all I'm saying. And, and also because what I'm hearing is a lot of, of what has been presented is not what you're really trying to get at with this project. So, so that makes me question even more than, are we doing this the right way, right? Are we getting at what you're feeling your community needs?
All the person St. Perez.
I would like to take advantage of the fact that we have all you guys here. And sorry to keep you as late as we have, it is appreciated. From where you're sitting, in terms of coordinating to meet the needs of the various communities in Ithaca, what challenges are you facing? And do you feel like having, having a city level of executive figure kind of spearheading that coordination would make it smoother or more effective?
I could, I could talk on this for a long time. I, I won't certainly, what I see in, in the very short amount of time I've been here is there are a lot of caring, compassionate people in the community. Certainly there's a number of, to what Phoebe has referred to as gems in the past in the community. And we have a lot of resources, like we're, we're here, law enforcement's at the table because we recognize like we need to work together for everybody's safety. And we need to be responsive to the community. And I think it's where we're at now and the conversations we're having, it's important to continue to have these conversations and continue to work towards the goals that are in the reimagined process. And, and I think that we are making tremendous progress, but we also need to make sure that we do it correctly, that we're not rushing. Certainly for my first, geez, I can't believe it's only been three months, I feel like I've been here much longer. There is a lot, there's a lot that we can do. There really is. And you have trained professionals on the mental health side, on the police side, that are here to, to help, to do this work. And so like, we need to, we need to come together. Like now, now is the time that everybody's at the table to put this plan together and provide these services. Certainly I, I, I can't say that I know how Phoebe feels. It certainly, I, I can see the emotion, I feel it. And in my role and, and kind of taking this job and continuing on as police chief is being responsive to that fear and being responsive to the needs of the community. And I think in creating another level without continuing these conversations, without setting goals and continuing to work towards these goals in, in public safety and just adding on top, we're continuing to spend, spend, spend. And at what point does, do we ever get to those goals? Because we're adding layers, we're training new people, we're bringing in other people into the, the conversation, and we're really not addressing the needs and what the community is asking for. The conversations that we're already continuing to have, CJC has been a fantastic partner. And these conversations and learning about what the expectations are. For me, learning about the history, I, I didn't know until a week ago that somebody was murdered in the parking lot of Walmart's. I, I didn't know that this had occurred. So there's a reason why we have law enforcement that's prepared to respond to the absolute worst case scenarios. But when do we, how do we best, you know, de-escalate, take that step back and communicate to someone who just needs some assistance, just needs some guidance, just needs to talk to someone? So I, I will stop now, certainly I'm open for conversations. I've, I've met with a number of the council members and certainly I, I want to hear what we need to do for the public to feel safe in the community.
I know, I'm just the consultant, but I'm going to tell you what I'm thinking because that's what you guys have asked me to do. One of the reasons I believe that unarmed response team has not formulated yet is because there has been no one to spearhead it. Literally that there's no one in the city governance that has the bandwidth to take on a project of that size. And I think that that was the intent of the deputy city manager, whatever the title is, was to be that point person who liaises with Thompson County Whole Health, who liaises with IPD, who liaises with community members and potentially forms this team as, as designed in the plan. If, if there is, if not the deputy city manager, then I would just say, then whom? Will be Tate leading this? Are we going to go through another three years of everybody's too busy to coordinate this because they have other directives? So in my, also short-term participation, a little bit longer than yours, it, it has been my, my observation that with the lack of a, a spearhead, someone who's, who's championing these efforts. CJC has done a tremendous amount on a lot of the other recommendations, the reimagining public safety plan. But again, no more bandwidth left in that individual. So the deputy city manager was designed through, I think, every report that came forward and evolved through as that point person to really grab hold, take it forward. And, and that was be a primary objective. And then when things evolve and manage there, then perhaps grow the program or perhaps direct other things as, as needed through city management.
This is my last.
Follow-up from the all the person and then.
I just want to say thank you both for that. Given that analysis, I'd be willing to support us bringing the discussion on the city manager.
Thank you, all the person Brown, two quick minutes.
I just, my, my last comment and thank you everybody for everything. Just one last thing. The whole, what do y'all call it again? Whole health was not included in the plan, right? They wasn't originally included in the reimagining public safety plan.
As an agency, no, but as a concept of having a non-police response of mental health, right?
We need to clear it because they were not someone that was considered. That was going to be deputy manager and others who would, the, yeah, chief deputy manager was going to be who decided, like you just said, right? And I think that we need to be clear. The model that they have is, is a nice model and everything. But it imitates a lot of programs in this community that are working now, will lose money because they're going to get money. Right? But that, that's not a here nor there. But what I do want to just say, that this process was created for the black and brown community. And their input needs to continuously be there, right? You know, and work and, I, I don't know. But that's it, I'm leaving alone. Whatever happens, happens. I'm here and I'm going to stay here. That's it, yeah.
What I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is we will direct the administration to put together a job description for the deputy city manager with, with an expanded responsibility portfolio and with it, bring in anticipated fiscal impact projection. All right, thank you all for coming.
Clarification, impact projection for like just one year or?
Multiple years.
I, I, I trust the administration to know that answer better than me off the cuff.
All right, thank you.
Sustained, yes. I mean, thank you all for joining us this evening. And we will have a presentation on short-term rentals next. I will entertain a motion for a three-minute recess.
To make a motion for a three-minute recess.
All the person St. Perez, seconded by all the person Win, all those in favor of a three-minute recess. All those in favor of a three-minute recess. Thank you, that's 10-0. All right, we are going to call back to order. It's 8:28. Thank you for joining us this evening for a presentation on the status of short-term rentals. I think we're all very interested. So we'll turn it over to our staff, thank you for being here this evening, and then we'll open it up to council.
All right, well, thank you for having us. I don't think I have met everyone yet. My name is Megan Wilson, I'm the deputy director of planning. And I also have with me Maura Baldiaga, who's a planner in our office who's been working and spending a lot of time on the short-term rental policy. So we wanted to come tonight and give you an update of where we're at and get some guidance on next steps moving forward. Okay, so just to reiterate and refresh of where we are at, as we began thinking about a short-term rental policy, we spoke with council at the time about what the objectives were and what they were hoping to achieve with such a policy. With that, we identified, council identified the following policy objectives. The first being preserving housing affordability in the long-term rental and homeownership markets. The second was to allow residents to, the ability to generate additional income from their properties through short-term rentals. And third was to balance the positive, possible positive and negative impacts of short-term rentals. So with this information, we prepared a policy framework, keeping in mind the goals and objectives that council had set out. So we came forward previously with a different framework than what we'd like to discuss with you tonight. At the time, we had a three-tiered permit system that had three different types of permits with different qualifications, different requirements. And Maura will talk more about this in a few minutes, but we did public outreach. We spoke with a policy analyst that specializes in short-term rental registration. And we also spoke to a lot of other communities. And what we are proposing now is a much simpler policy framework and approach to have one short-term rental permit, which would be issued to the primary residents of the property. So you must live on the property in order to be issued the permit. We're also proposing that we only allow short-term rentals in one and two family dwellings. Excuse me, so a little bit more information to get into the proposed, the current proposed framework is um, apartment would be available to hosts who want to rent out their primary residence, a room within it or an accessory unit on the same parcel. So, this might be someone that has extra bedrooms in their home now and would like to rent those. Um, it might be in a, you know, have an accessory apartment or other half of a duplex where they live. Um, or it's also possible that you could, um, well, you're on vacation or graduation weekend, you want to leave and rent out your entire home for that time while you're away. Um, all that would be allowed, there wouldn't be any restrictions on time of year when you can rent it, a number of days. And before, there was a lot of emphasis on hosted versus unhosted, whether, even if you live there, whether you could be there or not. As long as this is your primary residence and you've demonstrated that, it is up to you. Um, the timing is basically limited by that primary residence requirement. So, the host could be an owner, or it could be a renter with landlord approval. Um, a renter could only rent out their unit, so if you are renting half of a duplex, you can't get a permit to rent your neighbor's side or upper or lower. Um, so again, that could be the renter might rent it out while they travel, or they could rent out a room as a short-term rental within the unit. And we talked a little bit about this, that hosts could be on property or not during stays, but there, if you plan to rent it when you're not onsite, you will definitely need to have a local contact provided. We're also recommending that the rental permits go to one and two family dwelling units only right now. And again, this is um, for looking at the ability to implement and monitor this policy. It was getting very complicated and difficult to implement when we had all the different permit types, different requirements. If it's a multiple dwelling, it's a little more complicated to track which units within the multiple dwelling have the permit, who doesn't. So, we're proposing to start off, we do one and two family dwellings only. Um, and that's largely, again, for our ability to implement and monitor the policy. There would be a permit fee to get a short-term rental, and as is currently required, you would still need to have a housing inspection and maintain a certificate of compliance. Um, and this is a pretty big departure from what had been previously proposed and from what a lot of people are doing right now. So, we'd like to make sure that we give property owners who are using short-term rentals in a way that wouldn't be allowed under this policy, time to convert um, to the long-term rental market during peak rental periods. Um, and also um, think about that, and if that's not something they're interested in, uh, maybe if they feel they need to sell the property to someone who would like to be a long-term landlord. And the policy, once adopted, would be implemented by the um, city code enforcement with assistance from a third-party monitoring service, which we've talked about before, and we do believe is absolutely essential to being able to implement this policy. All right, I'm gonna let Maura now talk a little bit more about how we got to this point in the public process.
Yes, so I'll talk about our policy review process and how we came to this revision. Okay, um, so we conducted public outreach, we talked with a short-term rental policy analyst, and we had conversations with other communities. So, I am gonna talk about what we learned briefly, but just to note, we have a lot more detailed information on the city's short-term rental resource webpage. I'll revisit that again at the end of the presentation, but just so you know, there's a lot more detail posted publicly online. So, for public outreach, we conducted an online survey and had an in-person community conversation. I'll start with the survey. We had three hundred and eighty-four responses. One thing to note in all of our public outreach is there were a wide range of opinions and thoughts on short-term rentals in the community. A few key points I'll pull out is that there was support for short-term rental restrictions. So, you can see on the slide, fifty-seven percent of respondents stated that short-term rentals should be allowed in residential neighborhoods with reasonable restrictions. The same number of respondents agreed or strongly agreed with a policy that limits short-term rentals in non-primary residences. It's important to note that hosts overall did not agree with restrictions on short-term rentals. So, just one data point that illustrates that is that seventy-one percent of hosts who rent out a non-primary residence currently state there should be no restrictions on short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods. So, we saw that clearly in the data, that hosts do not agree with restrictions on short-term rentals as a, as a whole. So, the city also collected comments from the community conversation and from the survey. So, in total, we reviewed three hundred and forty-three comments. Some themes that rose um, to the surface were support for minimal restrictions on primary residence short-term rentals, specifically so residents can use that income to offset housing costs. There was also support for restrictions on absentee landlords, out-of-state buyers, corporate buyers. Comments also suggested that the city should focus on other ways to address housing rather than short-term rental restrictions. And comments also expressed uncertainty about the impacts of the policy and questions about the policy, which reflected um, the complexity of the policy that we had, were proposing. So, we also had a conversation with a short-term rental policy analyst who looked at our initial proposed policy and talked with us about best practices from other communities. And there were a few key things we learned from that. The policy was overly complicated and very difficult to implement and monitor. Um, also, the policy didn't read as achieving our goals of preserving housing and housing affordability. Um, we've also had conversations with other communities that have implemented short-term rental policies and talked about their, specifically a lot about their implementation of the policies and have used those learnings to inform this revised policy.
Okay, so again, kind of comparison, comparing the previous framework, um, we've gone from three different types of permits to one, that you must be a primary resident. Um, we do believe this is feasible to actually implement, monitor, enforce. Um, we noted that, you know, limits on the number of days and time of year are very difficult to, to monitor and can be very labor-intensive. Um, it wouldn't be as effective. But I think the most important part is that we, as we are looking back and through the feedback, the policy that we were originally proposing in the fall didn't really get us to achieving those goals that we had talked about. So, focusing on housing availability and affordability. We originally proposed um, a couple permit types that would allow people to rent units that were not their primary residence. And in doing so, you take a unit off of the long-term market for someone to live in permanently is now being a short-term rental. Um, so because of that, that's why we are recommending that we, we do not allow um, short-term rentals if it's not someone's primary residence. Um, and that's really, again, related to those policy objectives set out by council. If you all decide um, that this is still something you would like to consider, we have thought about ways to incorporate that. Um, you might want to consider a cap in the number of those permits, um, required spacing between those types, and also limits based on area, whether it be by zone or other geographic distinction. Um, we do want to be upfront, though, that this is going to be a big departure, as we said, from what is currently happening. And we know that a lot of the hosts are gonna have concerns about this change. Um, it will have a financial impact on a lot of people. Um, and it is something that we heard, but we just haven't found a way to meet the policy objectives while allowing this to continue. Um, landlords were another group we heard from that will probably have some concerns about this proposal because short-term rentals are something several of them use when they have an unexpected vacancy mid-year. Um, but again, it kind of falls into that category of how would we actually ensure that it went back to the long-term rental market because of that enforceability.
So, we wanted to share a tentative timeline, of course, this is all based on your feedback tonight. So, here we are in March presenting to you all. Based on your feedback, we could draft an ordinance to bring back to you all in April. Um, this would allow for a possible public hearing in May and then further consideration by you all in June. And if you, if you look further out in the future, we are proposing that the permit applications open in January twenty-twenty-five with full implementation by June twenty-twenty-five. And these dates are further out in the future because we need time to work with the third-party monitoring service to um, create the workflows and forms needed to process the permits efficiently and collect taxes efficiently. We also wanted to give hosts plenty of notice and time to make choices if they um, want to apply for a permit or are gonna choose to leave the short-term rental market for, um, due to their own choice or because they're of the regulation. So, we did want to give them a lot of lead time in knowing how this would impact them and being able to make their decisions. And then lastly, I'll just plug again the short-term rental resource page on the city's website. It has um, a lot of information on there that you can access, which provides more details and background information um, on what has been done to develop this policy to date.
Okay, so now we are at the part of the presentation where we really need to hear your feedback. Um, again, this is, the proposed policy is limiting short-term rentals to primary residences only. In our first question for all of you, is this a direction you agree with?
Thank you very much for the presentation. I will start taking questions, I see a couple of hands coming up. Uh, allow me to first just say, I appreciate the work that you've done on this. I think what you're bringing before us tonight very well captures uh, the mandate that staff were given by previous council. Obviously, council tonight will have a chance to weigh in. Um, for me, what, what you're proposing, uh, allowing the individual residents of the city to be able to supplement, you know, their income to fray the cost of property taxes and other things, I think is very valuable and more importantly for me, right? Making sure that that housing is preserved for the, the long-term residents. I think this is a really strong approach, so thank you for bringing that forward. Um, all the person Shapiro, and then I'll take other hands.
Uh, thank you, I'll, I'll look forward to supporting this when this comes to us for a vote. Of course, I'd want to read all the changes in a little more detail first, but um, this is uh, something that I think that um, we're trying to do to preserve affordable homes in our communities, so I think it's a step in the right direction. My only quick question that I think many of my constituents uh, might ask is for the family that wants to rent out their home on graduation weekend, but only graduation weekend, do they need a permit?
Yes, we are proposing, again, in that, we are proposing that every short-term rental will need a permit and it will require the certificate of um, compliance with building and housing code. Again, this is to make sure we found that when we were saying, oh, you would only do it for graduation and homecoming weekend, that there was really no mechanism to truly see that that's exactly how the property is being used as a short-term rental.
And just quickly, if I could jump in, if I could just ask, I know for maybe perhaps some members of council, they're familiar with this, but uh, the current law requires that as well, we've just suspended enforcement, correct?
Um, I would say at this point, due to resources, the enforcement is largely complaint-driven. Um, right now, you are required to have a certificate of compliance if you rent your property, either short-term or long-term. You are also required to play occupancy tax um, on rentals as a short-term rental, similar to a, a hotel or bed and breakfast. Um, but the majority of, of both um, do not happen. So, I would say um, that I, I think it's a positive change to make sure uh, some of these properties are safe and get the inspections they need.
Quick follow-up.
Just one very quick follow-up, because what, I was at the public forum that you had earlier last year, and uh, the various tiers of permits that you listed there, talk, there were different like price tiers as well, depending on your use. So, I would think that um, even though I've already said I would kind of support this, I would want to be interested in like what that permitting looked like and it was there like some consideration for like, where that price mat, you know, like in your, in your presentation last year, there was that consideration, had to charge a permit for someone who's doing this as a business versus somebody who's just trying to supplement a little extra income.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, thank you.
I had all the person St. Perez next.
Just want to say thank you, guys. Uh, seems like a clean, effective policy. Um, only thought I have is if we should give a slightly longer grace period in case people really just want to exit the market and need some time to sell their properties. But yes and yes to your questions.
Next, I have all the person Matos, Haynes Sharp and Brown.
Is this, you kind of touched upon this, but will this have, will this end up decreasing our city budget if we do um, switch to like primary residents only? Or like, what would be the like impact on our budget by doing this?
So, um, the budget, um, I'll start, and if you want to add, that's fine. So, again, this, the um, system will ensure that short-term rentals are paying the occupancy tax, so that will certainly have a um, positive effect on the budget. Right now, we believe that less than five percent of short-term rentals in the city are paying the required occupancy tax. Um, in terms of, I mean, there, the permit fees, we're not really planning to generate money off of the permit fees, they're more to cover the costs of um, we, the um, third-party compliance monitoring company, but I would say the occupancy tax could have a significant impact.
Yeah, that's essentially what I was getting at, is like the taxes.
Megan basically answered it, but we, we, out of a two-point-four million dollar room tax revenue, fifteen thousand is currently coming from short-term rentals, so there's only up to go.
I don't think it's gonna go up by a lot, though, because a lot of the activity currently would no longer be allowed under the new regulations.
But essentially, we're not seeing, we won't be seeing a decrease. Okay, thank you.
All the person Haynes Sharp.
Thank you very much, um, so much easier to wrap my mind around it than last fall. And um, yes and yes. I, I, do you have an example of, uh, or do you have a ballpark idea what the um, fees would be?
We haven't settled on an exact number, the general recommendation is one or two times the average nightly rental fee, which I believe, Maura, you can say what the?
According to data we've gotten from a, from a partner, the average rate per night is a hundred eighty-nine dollars.
And that varies time of year. Um, I would say that includes kind of the winter time when it's slower, whereas on graduation weekend, we know it's much, much higher than that.
All the person Brown.
I'm still a little confused, but I think I'm catching it. I guess you gotta be around a while. But I'm, I'm gonna follow her, say yes and yes. But my question is really about, so, how does this affect or, or um, or boost homelessness, right? Is it, is it gonna make it, because I do know of people who count surf, because they're homeless, and they're not in a shelter, or what? Yeah, I don't know if this is even the right conversation, because there are people who wind up living with someone because they have nowhere else to stay. Do DSS, are they involved in this in some kind of way? Because they will tell you, if somebody comes to them and say they're homeless, they, their first question is, do you have a family member? Do you have somebody that you could stay with? Like, this don't have nothing, okay, in connection with that.
So, I would say, um, I don't know that this would, we're not working with DSS on this, and I don't believe it would have a tremendous impact on homelessness, but I would say um, it will return units to the long-term market, um, because it's very difficult to com, for a long-term renter to compete with a short-term rental. The nightly average is just so different, um, that I think it will bring a lot of those units back on and offer more housing to people within the community.
Mm-hmm.
Again, and as was alluded to in the um, community conversation, this is not, this can't, this is not our solution to our housing, housing issue.
Mm-hmm.
This is one small piece, and incrementally, our goal is to have different policies and changes that will make it better, so.
Thank you.
Any members who have not spoke, all the person Fabrizio.
Thank you so much, I'm, I'm really impressed with your um, thorough analysis and reaching out to other places and, and looking at comparables. Um, and I would be yes and yes on this too. Um, I do have a couple of questions, though. I'm wondering, um, is there a projection for the like third-party enforcement? And I'm assuming, I just want to ask, though, there isn't any bandwidth? And I'm assuming, I just want to ask, though, there isn't any bandwidth for this, any place within the city, like we would need to hire another company to do this?
So it is pretty critical to have the other company because they can pull the data. If you go onto Airbnb and look at a listing, there's a rough idea of the map and where the unit is. But the third-party companies, they get the data and will help us identify which units are being used as short-term rentals, and then cross-reference to see, do they have a valid permit? And of course, the part of that permit is the tax and the housing inspection. And if not, we're also going to work with them to, on some preliminary first steps of enforcement of the policy. So we noticed your advertising, we also see that you don't have a permit yet, please take time to apply at this link. Eventually, it will fall to the city's building division. But we, there is funded in the budget, a new housing inspector that will help, one with the new inspections that might need to happen, but also follow up on complaints and those that are violating the policy.
And thank you so much. And what would the projected cost be for the third-party enforcement, third-party company?
So the projected cost is between $25,000 and $30,000. Between the permit fees and the room tax funds that are generated will cover those costs.
And like the conference center, there was some new tax that was generated for that. I'm just wondering, how would you decide? How would we decide, like what the tax is going to be? Tax or fee?
Could you, I don't know if I understand the question.
I'm just thinking about the conference center. So there was like some sort of special tax that was created, I'm sorry, I don't know the details, for that. And I'm just wondering if this is another potential scenario where we would put something in place like that, or is there already this occupancy tax that you think would suffice?
I think I understand the question. So yes, we have a City of Ithaca Hotel Room Occupancy Tax. That tax is used to support the conference center and only that used by law, by state-enabling law and local law. We went to the state legislature to give us the special authority to do that. We don't have the ability to establish another room tax for another use. We do have the ability to use a portion of room tax revenues for the city's purposes to support tax administration under the law. And in this year's budget, there is some funding, as there has been from the beginning, to support the controller with the work that they do to administer the tax. And this year, for the first time, we included in the budget some funding to support the software, to support tax administration around short-term rental room tax revenue collection.
Just thanks, and just one more thing. You said the fee would be one to two times, the permit fee would be one to two times the average nightly fee? That would be like the annual fee that would be charged?
That's correct.
And is that, and that's based on the research that you've done with other cities and what's typically happening in other places?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any colleagues who have not spoken? All the person win.
Yes, I'm a yes, but just kind of anticipating some of the blowback. I know one thing that multiple people brought up was they kind of underplayed the impact on the city and how many complaints we get. I don't know if you can speak to that. And, you know, I've certainly heard from constituents and friends whose neighborhoods would be impacted. It's not just returning housing units to the market, but also restoring neighborhoods that have been pretty much hollowed out by STRs. So I'm very supportive, but again, just kind of in preparation for the feedback, you speak to the complaint issue.
Yes, so we, it's not, we don't have a lot of information on whether complaints are received are from a short-term rental versus a student rental or that kind of thing. I will say that the complaints about, well, we have heard them, the complaints about disruptiveness or behaviors at short-term rentals has not been the driving behind this policy. So I would say that, while I do think there could potentially be some positive benefits in that way, there's also, that really wasn't the piece that drove this whole consideration and effort.
Thank you. With recognition that we have two executive sessions tonight, and it sounds like there's very broad consensus, I want to thank staff for coming and preparing this presentation. And it sounds like you have a clear mandate from council to move forward with this, so I look forward to seeing the proposed ordinance at the April special topics meeting, correct?
Thank you very much, Jesse. We'll ring it back then.
Thank you very much. At this time, I will entertain a motion for executive session for the edification of the public and the press. We will have two executive sessions, one on the proposed acquisition, sale, lease of real property, proposed acquisition securities, the publicity of which will substantially check the value thereof, and the second on a personnel matter. But before I take that, I see the city manager flagging me, so I'm going to see what they like to share.
I just know we had the controller's report delayed from the last meeting to this one. So did you want to do that quick, so Scott can go?
Oh, Scott, you're online?
Scott was online, but he was going to come up.
Oh, well then, okay. I just assumed because I didn't see him. Apologies all. So yes, we'll have a quick controller's report and then we will adjourn to executive session.
He was online, and he was waiting to see. I just don't want to do that to him too, meetings and our...
All the person.
Deb, are you gonna, are you planning to do a report as well? Or are we, is it just the written report?
I think if members have questions on the report, sorry, I didn't mean to...
Yeah, I was just saying, my written report is there. If you had any questions, and I just wanted to elevate an email that I sent earlier in the week. If you can push out the information about the water meter replacement situation, we would love for you to do that. We're getting a moderate to okay level response on that. And I don't know, bright green postcards, notices everywhere we could think to put notices. I mean, we've tried all the standardized communication ways, and there are still some people, even in a meeting that we had the other day, that were, what are you talking about? Oh, I threw that postcard away. We were like, don't do that. So any way in which you can be helpful in pushing that out, whatever networks you have, we don't have good, non-electronic ways to reach people. So community forums or neighborhoods or any way you can share that information, we'd really appreciate it.
All the person Hane Sharp.
A siren notification?
That might not be permissible, right?
We could think about that. What I'm going to do is I'll have, yeah, I'll have, I'll have Scott kind of write up. Unfortunately, it's going to escalate for customers, like if they don't respond, then there's going to be a second level of communication. So maybe the like last level of communication, we might be able to use that. We're really trying to reserve that for emergencies. But if we get to a place where someone's water might be shut off, that might be deemed an emergency, so we'll talk about it internally. I don't want to overuse the emergency text, but we'll think about it.
Is there a PDF version of this so I can put it through like the listservs that I'm on?
I can make one quick. Yeah, I'm not sure. Or I can get the actual postcard probably from the water department.
Thank you very much. I'll now welcome up our acting controller. Sorry, I didn't see you on the screen because my back is to it.
You should have gotten the written report in the agenda packet, so...
Questions from colleagues?
Good, how are you? Nice to see you again. It's been a while.
Thank you for preparing this. I don't really have any specific questions I can think of at the moment, but I appreciate so much getting this, and I know how short-staffed you are, and I really appreciate...
And as we get further into the year, there'll be more, you'll start to see the bigger picture and that type of things. Right now, it's like in there, you know, we talked about sales tax, all sales tax collections are down. Well, next month, they may not be. So give it a little time to kind of mellow out and level out, and then if you have any really significant questions, but our goal is to kind of give this to you like every month, so.
I was wondering if maybe there's an sort of end-of-year report that you're compiling that we might, that might help us get a sort of overall picture?
You know, we used to do that years and years ago, before my time, actually. Kind of fell by the wayside, probably mostly because of not enough staff to do it. I mean, we do our annual report to the state, but that's just numbers, that gets just input. We used to put out almost like a narrative-type thing that kind of described the city and, you know, how it went for the entire year and that kind of thing.
Right, right. Something that would just help us in preparation for budget season, which I'm thinking of as kind of like May, right? I know Deb mentioned that our retreat is sort of bookending the budget season and that we would have some exercises and things to help us set a framework and sort of think about, think about budget stuff. So I'm just thinking like where we're at with regard to, you know, our debt load and the kinds of things, like overall picture stuff that we, that I think might be useful for us.
I'm sure we could come up with this, a little summary or something like that, wouldn't be too terribly difficult. I wouldn't go into a whole lot of detail.
Yeah, yeah, just like a broad sort of...
Take a lot of time.
Yeah.
Recognize the city manager.
Thank you.
So as I mentioned at the retreat, I'm putting together a survey for council to get a sense of what information you need, what priorities you have, et cetera. And then once we have that from you, we were planning on using one of these meetings. We have incredibly limited time with our already retired, yet still-serving controller, and we have to really limit the time that he is continuing to work for us, because there are some restrictions on some hours that he can work, and we're trying to really utilize his expertise when it's needed. But we will have a joint presentation probably from Scott and our outgoing controller, but we wanted to make sure it was focused on really what it is that you need. So I don't know that a written report makes sense, but in lieu of that, we're going to do a deep dive into how the budget works, what the different balances are, et cetera, and then I'll get a sense from you, the surveys that you bring back to me, what we need to bring to that meeting. So I think the mayor and I were thinking May for that presentation.
And then the interim will still can produce this, at least very similarly, and so you'll always have that to look at, too, so.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it.
No problem.
And so as I said, we will have two executive sessions, one on the real property question and one on a personnel issue. May I have, there will be no voting items, we will not be back in chambers following these. Motion to move into executive session for personnel, for real property, moved by all the person Saint Perez, seconded by all the person Hane Sharp, all those in favor of moving into executive session. That carries 10-0, thank you.